Welcome to Police Chief Eddie Garcia. Take it away, Eddie.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Again, thank you for having us. I know we have a lot of information to cover here in the next couple hours. Let me just start off by thanking my staff for the tremendous amount of work that we'll be presenting today and, you know, what we're currently doing and what we have planned. I'm also proud of the fact that, again, we opened up what we're doing with third party to take a look at our data. And as we're always trying to improve, I can't thank the University of Texas San Antonio, Dr. Smith and his colleagues for doing as much as they did on such a short timeframe. So with that, I will pass this on to Lieutenant Anderson to begin the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Vice Mayor, Council members. Thank you for having us here today. Today, you're going to hear a presentation from the Sexual Assault Investigations Unit on patterns and statistics and current work items that we're working on. And then you'll hear sexual assault analysis from the University of Texas San Antonio, Dr. Smith. With that, I'm going to turn the PowerPoint presentation over to our Crime and Intelligence Analyst, Angelie Montessa.
Good morning. Thank you for having me again. For today's presentation, we will be presenting to you an update of current sexual assault patterns and statistics from the last meeting in June that reflected 2017 and 2018. Today's update will reflect January 2019 until September 30th, 2019 of this year. Then we will provide updates on the current work items in progress, as well as review the total list of work items in which the police department has been working on and accomplishing thus far. Lastly, representatives from the University of Texas San Antonio will close with the presentation of their findings regarding San Jose sexual assault analysis. Before moving forward, I will remind the audience that some topics and terminology used today may be of sensitive and triggering in nature to some. The sexual assault patterns and statistics presented today reflects the rape and child molest categories from January to September of this year. Because the term "sexual assault" is very generalized and sometimes used interchangeably, please note that for the purpose and understanding of the content that is about to be presented, I will be referring to crimes either in terms of category or their penal code offenses rather than the general term "sexual assault." From January 1st until September 30th, 2019, there were 1,301 unique cases involving rape or child molest. A reminder that a crime category may encompass more than one offense. In the case of child molest, the category in itself houses three penal codes, whereas the rape category houses eight penal codes. Not shown here is domestic 220 PC under the rape category, and the reason is that there were no numbers to report under this offense for the time period presented. The distinguishing factor between rape and child molest is penetration or sexual intercourse. The child molest category involves any sexual activity or act, including but not limited to fondling, physical contact over clothing, or the victim is the one touching themselves at the instance of the offender. 100 cases involved more than one offense, including offense from both the rape and child molest categories, making a total of 1,401 rape or child molest offenses committed. With the knowledge that cases involving 288A lewd and lascivious acts with a child under 14 years is greater than 261 rape, we included here a five-year comparison since 2015 with a three-year linear projection. Both penal codes 288A and 261 are projected to increase in the next three years. The following is an update in response to last June's inquiry and request to see all ethnicities in relation to 288A and 261 rape, beginning with victim demographics of 288A. Please note that for 288A, where the victim is an adult, this reflects that the victim at the time that the report was made, the victim was under the age of 14 when the incident had occurred. Percentage-wise, juvenile victims of Hispanic, Latino, or Mexican origin comprise 64.3% of all juvenile victims. Followed by 11% juvenile victims of Caucasian descent, Asians collectively at 9.4%, and African-Americans with 5.6%. Others were at 9.2% and American Indian and Alaskan natives 0.3%. The unknowns were 0.3%. Note that the Asian percentage calculated together included other Asians, Chinese, Cambodian, Filipino, Japanese, Pacific Islander, Vietnamese, and Asian Indian. For those arrested for the offense of a 288A, most were adults. One of the adults who were arrested or out of the adults who were arrested or cited, 70.5% were of Hispanic, Latino, or Mexican origin; Asians collectively with 13.6%, followed by 11.4% Caucasian and 4.5% African-American. For juveniles who were arrested and cited, 54.5% were of Hispanic, Latino, or Mexican origin; 18.2% Asians collectively; and 18.2% Caucasian and 9.1% African-Americans. This slide represents victim demographics, both juvenile and adult, for 261 rape offenses. Of all juvenile victims, 52.1% were of Hispanic, Latino, or Mexican descent; 32.3% were Caucasian; 5.2 Asians collectively; and 3.1% African-American. Among all adult victims, 45.1% were of Hispanic, Latino, or Mexican descent; 32% Caucasian; 9.7% Asians collectively; and 7.8% African-Americans. Among all juveniles arrested or cited for a 261 rape, there were a total of four juveniles. One was of Vietnamese descent, and the other three were of African-American descent. Of all adults arrested for a 261 rape, 56.3% were of Hispanic, Latino, or Mexican descent; 18.8% were Caucasian; 18.8% African-American; and 6.3% listed as other Asian. The takeaway from the last four slides regarding demographics is the reinforcement of cultural competency in the practice of trauma-informed care, especially in remembering that culture extends beyond the identification of a person's race and ethnicity. The capacity of law enforcement, social workers, community-based agencies, and all other service providers to include other variables such as faith and religion, level of acculturation, and cultural values is an integral part in understanding the impact of sexual assault within a particular ethnic community. The following slide reflects children from age zero to 14 whose involvement or role in the offense is all-inclusive and not limited to the victim role. The purpose of all-inclusive numbers is to see the larger picture of the number of children who are affected and exposed in some way to the following crimes. The impact can be whether the child served as a juvenile victim, juvenile arrested or cited, both victim and arrested, witness, suspect, or any other role. It displays that impact. The takeaway here is to take into consideration the number of children in contact with law enforcement for investigative purposes. The following next slides addresses updates for the police department's current work items. We broke these down into topics or categories for the ease of reference. What you see in bold, we will touch upon in the upcoming slides. Items in progress in terms of programs and training include trauma-informed care training for investigators and department-wide, Vigilant Parent Initiative, Sexual Assault Education and Training Program. And it is important to note here that trauma-informed care training for law enforcement will address cultural responsiveness and competency role in the investigation of cases. New implementations include the creation of an ethnic-based agency work group, Domestic Violence High Risk Response Team, the Report John Program, which involves Human Trafficking Unit, the Child Advocacy Center Implementation, which is a regional effort, and additional staffing for Special Victims Unit creation as budget allows. In terms of meetings, these involve meetings in which the police department has participated in and will be continuing to provide updates. We will be participating in updating council at the upcoming meeting next March 2020 as well. This is inclusive of a build-out plan for ethnic-based agencies alongside the already existing community-based organizations and regional partners. Members of the police department have met to study and assess internal status designations K, lack of investigative resources. I'll be providing further updates on this in the upcoming slides. The trauma-informed team of the police department has been created. The team is responsible for the development of the trauma-informed care curriculum, which is currently in progress. The primary goals of the trauma-informed care training encompasses four goals. These are to improve criminal investigations, policing skills, and the leveraging of community resources through the recognition of trauma in victims, develop cultural competency skills, increase emotional wellness, and prevent negative impact upon mental health. The training will be rolled out in two phases. Phase one of which will be classes provided to the Bureau of Investigation's personnel. And phase two is the expansion of the class to be provided department-wide to patrol. This is the implementation in early in 2020. The Vigilant Parent Initiative Program's pilot class launched in September for the Eastside Union High School District at Andrew Hill High School. Outreach efforts have been made to school administrators and staff. And we are currently in the progress of setting up sessions for the 2020 school year. The YWCA Sexual Assault Education and Training has been funded, and the sexual assault prevention training is spearheaded by YWCA, known as the T-Club. This is an evidence-based program that has been implemented within schools in San Jose with six sessions held to date. The objective of the T-Club is to learn and identify differences between healthy and unhealthy abusive relationships and to develop the essentials to having a healthy relationship. Working partnerships have already been developed with the San Jose Unified School District, Gunderson High School, Broadway High School, Eastside Union High School District, and Apollo High School, with additional updates to come about this in March 2020. Two new assessments have been developed and added to the Domestic Violence Field Report. Currently, in the Domestic Violence Field Report, we have a lethality assessment and strangulation-suffocation assessment. Coming January 2020, the Domestic Violence Field Report will now include a sexual assault assessment and human trafficking assessment. All four assessments will provide the metrics necessary to assess intersectionality. From the last meeting, we deep-dive into internal status designation K, lack of investigative resources. From the deep dive, it was determined that clearance status alone was not appropriate measurement tool in understanding the occurrence of sexual assault as a whole and in understanding why a case might not necessarily lead to an arrest or citation. Members of the police department, including myself and Lieutenant Anderson of the Sexual Assaults Unit, met to discuss and further study internal status K. From the meetings, the development of tentative two new statuses came about. The first is lack of victim cooperation, defined as the victim was unable to be contacted after numerous efforts made by the investigator. And two, victim requested to close the case, defined as the victim stated to the investigator that they wished to close the case with the possibility to reopen it in the future. This will be implemented January 2020, and ultimately, lack of investigative resources will truly be defined as lack of resources. Included here is a review of the current definition of internal status K, defined as despite leads, a case is closed and not cleared due to a lack of investigative resources, in which lack of resources can mean any of the following: seriousness of a crime, lack of staffing, lack of victim or witness cooperation, lack of strong leads, and lack of evidence. And this is from the June meeting where we found that the large majority of the cases being closed under internal status K fell under victim requested to close a case or lack of victim cooperation, both at 38%. And this is a current update with regards to clearance and internal status. As you see, lack of investigative resources is at 34% of internal statuses, and total clearance is reflective of the number of unique cases involving offenses categorized as a rape or child molest. Note that some of the cases involved have more than one offenses involved. Ultimately, there's a number of cases not being cleared by arrest or citation. And remember, numbers reported to FBI/UCR are meant to answer one question: was a suspect arrested or cited? If the answer is no, the remaining choices are N for not cleared or O for exceptional means. In terms of the UCR code, the N is for cases not cleared, C is case was cleared by arrest or citation, and O is the case was cleared by exceptional circumstances other than an arrest or citation. And this is intended to be used sparingly. For an offense to be cleared within UCR, the case resolution must meet certain criteria. And remember, the criteria for C cleared by arrest, they have to follow three specific conditions. They have at least one person has to be arrested, charged with the commission of the offense, and turned over to the court for prosecution, whether following arrest, court summons, or police notice. For cleared by exceptional means, four conditions have to be met. You have to identify the offender, gather enough evidence to support an arrest, make a charge, and turn over the offender to the court for prosecution; identify the offender's exact location so that the suspect could be taken into custody immediately; and encounter the circumstance outside the control of law enforcement that prohibits the agency from arresting, charging, and prosecuting the offender. And these are examples of exceptional clearance again: the death of offender, victim refuses to cooperate in the prosecution, offender is prosecuted by state or local authorities in another city for a different offense, or is prosecuted in another city or state by the federal government for offense which may be the same; extradition is denied, in custody of other or is in custody of other jurisdiction; the suspect is in custody of another jurisdiction usually for a more serious offense; and extradition was either denied or not pursued. This is a hypothetical view of the previous slide. And notice if two designations were created to measure lack of victim cooperation and victim requested to close the case, notice that lack of investigative resources is down to 1%. And per the FBI's discretion on the use of UCR data, it is important to remember there are various factors that play into the contribution of a crime within a city. So if we were to deep-dive further, remember that factors of consideration in terms of population growth in San Jose peaked in 2013. Between January 2014 and January 2015, Santa Clara County grew faster than the state average. And per the FBI's discretion, population density, degree of urbanization, variations in composition of the population are some factors that affect the type of crime occurring from place to place. And lastly, I'll reiterate the FBI's discretion of use. When providing or using agency-oriented statistics, the FBI cautions and in fact strongly discourages data users against using rankings to evaluate locales or the effectiveness of their law enforcement agencies. Thank you. As far as next steps, continued implementation of the sexual assault work items will be continued in terms of the next March 2020. We will update you. The spending plan for the $6,090 Sexual Assaults Law Enforcement Training and Supportive Services Reserve. We will expand the Sexual Assault Education and Training Program. And additional staffing and the creation of the Special Victims Unit will be followed through as budget allows. Thank you.
That concludes the sexual assault patterns and statistics and current work items. Now we'll move on to the sexual assault analysis from the University of Texas San Antonio, Dr. Smith.
I am professor and chair of the Department of Criminology and Criminal Justice at the University of Texas at San Antonio. And myself and my colleague, Rob Tilier, conducted the analysis that I'm about to go over with you. Before I get started, I'd like to thank Chief Garcia and his staff for engaging with us and for the tremendous cooperation that they've always given us in the various projects that we've worked on together, including this one, and the same goes for the city of San Jose. We value that relationship very much. Okay. When we were contacted by Chief Garcia, we were asked if we could provide some analytic assistance in helping the city and the police department understand the patterns of its sexual assaults over the last 10 years. So we proceeded with that premise in mind, and we asked for data going back to 2010 and receive that data from the police department. The data that we looked at were primarily reported sexual assault data collected by the agency going backward in time from 2018 through the beginning of 2010. We used whatever data the police department had available to it in its RMS system. Some of the variables that we took into account are listed there. You see, we looked at victim characteristics. We looked at offender and suspect characteristics. We looked at characteristics of the incident: date, time, location, where did it occur, the type of location that was involved, whether a weapon was involved, and importantly, the relationship between the victim and the offender. As you all know, the FBI's definition of rape changed in 2013 and became more expansive. The San Jose Police Department began to fully implement, in terms of its reporting of sexual assault/rape, began to fully implement those new definitions in 2015. So as I go through the slides, I'll note the differences in how the definitions change the nature of what we know about sexual assault in San Jose over time. What you see here is a longitudinal graph of sexual assault rate. That's per 100 standardized to per 100,000 population, using the definitions as they existed at the time that the offense was classified. And that's the red line that you see. And so the trend clearly is an upward one, and it's been rising fairly steadily since about 2011 or 2012. Skip through a couple slides and bring you to this one. Okay. So one of the questions that we grappled with was whether or not the change and the apparent increase in sexual assaults in San Jose, might that have been an artifact of the definitional change that occurred in 2015, or actually occurred in 2013 and was implemented in 2015? And so we plotted sexual assaults in a number of ways on this single slide here to give you a picture of that, that helps address that question. So let me kind of go through these sort of color by color. The green line is the sexual assault rate, captured broadly using the new FBI definition, which includes sort of what we call historical rape, sexual, you know, forcible sexual intercourse between a man and a woman. But it also includes the more expansive categories that are now encompassed in the FBI's definition of rape. And we were provided a look-back table, if you will, by the police department to allow us to reclassify the offenses that occurred prior to the definitional change as if they were rape, so that they were under the new definition, so that we're sort of comparing apples to apples across all years. And that's that green line that you see. The orange line is rape. It's the sort of classic categorization of rape. And the red line is, again, all sexual assaults using the definition as they existed at the time that they were reported. And you'll see that in 2013, thereabouts, the red line and the green line merged. That's when the definitions changed, and they sort of became the same. That gap between the orange line and the green line is, in essence, the gap that is the result of the definitional change. So rape goes, continues to sort of, that's the orange line. Rape, as we've classically identified it or categorized it, continues to increase sexual assaults more broadly, including those other categories of sexual assaults are represented by the green line. And that begins to diverge from classic rape, if you will, more broadly or more steeply, I should say, across the years. And again, looking backward in time, from 2013 onward, going backward, you'll see that there's a gap between the green and the orange line. The green line represents sort of the truest rate of sexual assault that we can put together, as it's reported anyway, in San Jose, because it applies the new definitions post-2013, looking backward in time to 2010. So had those definitions been in place going all the way back in 2010, your rate of sexual assault in San Jose would have been represented by the green line rather than the orange line. Okay? So it represents an increase that's partially responsive, is a response of the definition. But the increase itself, the trend, is not an artifact, or it's not a reflection of the definitional change. Does that make sense to you? So sexual assaults have increased across all categories, no matter how we look at them, in San Jose over time, regardless of the definitional change. So one of the things that we did is we looked at victimization by age. We looked at, you know, were there changes in juvenile or adult victims over time? This particular slide provides you the rate of juvenile victimization across the years 2013 to 2018. And you'll see some year-to-year fluctuation across those years, but there's no, just, there's nothing that really jumps out at you as a trend, you know? We're not seeing an increase or a decrease linearly over time. There's just some year-to-year fluctuations. So there's not a whole lot to say in terms of a story about changes in victimization by age across time here in San Jose. And keep in mind that as we go through these slides and we kind of drill down into the data, again, what we're trying to do here is look for patterns and trends that might suggest an intervention point. Is there some pattern that we can see evident in the data that might suggest a mechanism for the police department or the community to use as a leverage point to try to address the problem? In the case of juvenile or age of the victim, there's really, there's not much of a story to tell in terms of change. This is a similar slide, but it looks at race and ethnicity across time. The predominant ethnic group in San Jose is Hispanic. That's the green bar that you see there. That's why it's higher than the rest. Whites are represented by the orange bar. Blacks are blue, and Asians are black. Again, what we're looking for, are there changes or trends that we can see in these data across time? data across time? And the answer is not really. The race of the victim, again, there is some year-to-year fluctuation, but as a social scientist, there's nothing there that tells me that there's an identifiable pattern or trend in terms of the racial or ethnic composition of victims. They have remained relatively stable across time. This looks at location, the police department categorizes the location at which a sexual assault occurs in a whole variety of ways. This is a collapsed version of the data, just for presentation's sake. We looked at public versus private places where these sexual assaults may have occurred. And again, we're looking for patterns or trends over time. Is it possible, for example, that public sexual assaults, or sexual assaults that occurred in public places, have they increased or decreased compared to years past? Vice versa, have sexual assaults in private settings increased or decreased? And you can see just visually that, again, absent some year-to-year fluctuation, there's not been a whole lot of change in terms of where sexual assaults are occurring as we break them down, as between public and private spaces. And that's also true, we actually looked at these data in a variety of other ways that are not depicted, using the sort of 25 or so categories of place that the police department captures, and there's not much, there's not really a story there either. This looks at weapon type. So, what type of weapons were used, if any, in the sexual assault? It ranges from the use of a firearm, which is the orange, the small orange bar there, personal weapons, hands, feet, fists, that sort of thing, is the green bar, knife is blue, no weapon is yellow, and then something else is black. The one pattern that you may notice in these data is that between 2013 and 2017, you had some year-to-year fluctuations that were kind of unremarkable. But in 2018, the percentage of reported offenses involving personal weapons went down pretty significantly, from about 73% to about 57%. And likewise, the percentage of offenses that were reported as involving no weapon increased pretty substantially, from about 22% in 2017 to 36% in 2018. That is a significant difference between those, in those two years. So, I'm going to, I'll return to that, but if you just keep that in mind, I'll return to that in a moment when we get to another slide that perhaps may provide us with sort of maybe a loose hypothesis about what's going on. But that is certainly an interesting change between 2017 and 2018. This next slide looks at the relationship between the victim and the offender. That's an important, from a criminological standpoint, that's an important relationship to understand. And again, we're looking for patterns or trends over time, change. We don't see a lot of change. The, you know, sexual assault in San Jose and nationwide tends to be an acquaintance offense. That is, it's committed typically by people who are known to one another. That's reflected in your data. Somewhere between 58% to 56% of sexual assaults that occur in San Jose occur between people who are known to one another. Family members are represented in the orange bar, boyfriend, girlfriend in the green bar, and married or common-law relationship in the blue bar. Again, what you notice is that those lines are fairly flat. There hasn't been a lot of change in terms of the relationship between the suspect or the offender and the victim over time. This looks specifically at different types of offenses, attempts, the green bar, stranger, rapes in the orange bar, and other types of sexual assaults in the yellow, in the yellow line, rather, over time. You had a pretty significant drop in stranger rapes between 2014 and 2015, and then the line sort of flattened out again. And the yellow and the green lines are, again, you know, represents not a whole lot of change, other than an increase certainly, going back to 2013, for example, compared to 2018. But, you know, there's no pattern or trend there that really suggests that there's been significant changes in sexual assaults committed by strangers. This looks similarly at, breaks it down by sexual assault type by acquaintances. Again, you see that same decrease that we saw a second ago for rape, but other than that, there's nothing particularly remarkable in terms of change across time. And same graph with familial rape, that is particularly looking at married or common-law relationship, people in a common-law married relationship. Rapes have gone down over time among those kinds of folks, relationships anyway, while some of the others have increased. This slide is related to the one that I mentioned previously about the type of weapon that was used. Perhaps it's related. So, this looks at how long did it take before the victim reported the offense to the police? And the average number of months across time. So, let me pick a bar here. In 2017, the average number of months between when the offense occurred and when it was reported was about 10 months. In 2018, that jumped up to 14 months. So, and what the green line shows is sort of the opposite of that. And that's, if you think about that, that's a fairly long period of time, right? Between the, you know, on an average, between when an offense occurs and when it's reported. That can be impacted by, and that's an average, so any average can be impacted by outliers, you know, by cases that are very old. So, the green line sort of looks at, okay, what percentage of sexual assaults were reported on the other end of the spectrum, within a month of occurrence? And you see that that number goes, starts to trend downward, and between 2017 and 2018, it goes from 74.5% to about 70.5% at the same time that the average number of months is increasing. So, some, between 2017 and 2018, there appears to be a reporting difference among victims. They were reporting, victims in 2018, there were, a larger percentage of them were reporting older offenses than in previous years. And fewer of them were reporting offenses that occurred within a month. So, how is that connected to that other slide that we looked at related to weapon type? Recall that in that slide, maybe I'll just go back to it. Recall that here, that the percentage of offenses that involved personal weapons went down pretty significantly between 2017 and 2018, and those type of, are the offenses that were reported who have occurred with no weapon use at all went up pretty significantly. So, we have two pieces, two data points sort of coming together. We've got more older offenses being reported between 2017 and 2018, and we've got fewer of them involving weapons and more involving no weapon. What does that tell us? I'm not sure it tells us anything definitively, but what it suggests potentially is that there has been a change in reporting behavior by victims. Why that is, I don't know. There is, you know, there's no evidence out there to suggest that it's driven by any one thing, but it is certainly a notable change in the reporting behavior by victims. Some have suggested that this might be an artifact or a reflection of the increased awareness in society about sexual assaults, Me Too movement, if you will. You know, that's sort of speculative at this point, but what we do know, I think, we can be pretty confident in saying, is that there was a change in reporting behavior that occurred in the last couple of years by victims. These next two slides look at offending, or reporting, rather, by district, by police district. Because one of the things that we want to know in an analysis like this is whether or not there have been geographic patterns in sexual, reported sexual assaults that might lend themselves to some geographic-based intervention strategy. And so, what we did here, just for simplicity's sake, is we plotted the districts that increased by more than 50% over that 2013 to 2018 period. That's the left-hand panel, as you're looking at the screen. Those that increased but by less than 50%, and then those that decreased. So, you had two districts, District Edward and District, I'm not sure what, how you guys refer to them, but in my phonetic alphabet language, that's District Edward and District Yankee, E and Y, you had two districts that increased by more than 50%.
Yellow, we use yellow.
Yellow, okay. And so, you have, although it's orange on the slide, so District Edward, E, Edward, there in the middle of the city, kind of just south of the police headquarters, and then you've got District Yellow, that large district down there to the, in the far south part of the city. Those both increased by more than 50% as a rate. And that's interesting because they're very, they're very different districts, as you know. And so, again, we would ideally be looking for patterns, geographic patterns that might suggest that your largest increases are occurring in a certain part of the city, or at least in parts of the city that have similar demographics. And that's just not the case here. You've got two very pretty divergent districts that showed your largest increases. Your other ones that increased by, increased but by less than 50%, again, and those are the yellow boxes that you see, they're kind of scattered around the city. And same, and the same with those that are, that were actually decreasing. So, it's, there's no real identifiable, from our perspective, geographic pattern that would suggest an intervention point that could be applied in a focused area, for example, to have a substantial effect on the overall rate in the city. So, what do we say then? We looked at the data a lot of different ways. We didn't find a smoking gun, I wish we did. You know, we have an overall pattern, or overall trend, rather, of increase. We, as you've seen, as I've walked through the slides, we looked at it and broke it down in any number of ways, looking for identifiable patterns or trends that might suggest an intervention point. Other than that victim reporting difference between 2017 and 2018 that I noted, there was, there was not a real pattern that stood out to us. That said, there are some, I think, conclusions and summary, summary and conclusions that we can, we can reach looking at the data. I think we've been able to demonstrate that the change over time, the increase over time, is not simply an artifact of the reporting change, the definitional change of rape. We know that there has been this reporting difference between, among victims, but in the last couple of years, which is interesting, and probably bears further analysis. There, because the increase is sort of broad-based, not geographically focused, not particularly focused on areas or types of locations, victim-suspect relationships, there's no obvious racial or ethnic pattern, there's no obvious age pattern in the data. This is a problem that, to me, as a criminologist, lends itself to some of the things that you heard in the earlier presentation that the police department is doing, and some other things that are reflected in the Santa Clara County's Public Safety Report, that takes sort of a very broad-based public health strategy, series of strategies, to try to address the problem. Sexual assault is a very difficult problem to address from a police standpoint. Most of the crimes occur indoors, and most of them occur between people who are known to one another. And those are two factors that make it very difficult for the police to intervene in any meaningful way, most of the time. That said, violent crime, as measured by aggravated assaults and robbery and sexual assaults, has increased in San Jose and in Santa Clara County, apart from sexual assaults. And at the same time that the police department's sworn strength has gone down pretty significantly over that period of time that we analyzed. Now, there is good research to suggest that there is a correlation between police strength and crime, particularly street crime, like aggravated assault and robbery. And that relationship is a negative one. As police strength increases, street crime measured in aggravated assaults and robberies typically decreases. You had a pattern here where the police department's sworn strength was decreasing while at the same time that violent crime was increasing. And that, from an empirical standpoint, that's not an atypical pattern. You would expect to see something like that, in fact. Now, one of the things that we would be interested in, or might suggest that we delve into in subsequent analyses, is looking at sexual assaults across the Bay Area in particular. As a criminologist, I'd want to know, we have these increases in San Jose, what's going on in the surrounding communities, counties, and cities? Have they experienced similar increases? Has that, or are there differences there? And might that be informative in some way? I think that's worthy of exploration. Looking at victim reporting behavior, I mentioned earlier, is also, I think, worthy of further exploration. And to do that, you know, you probably want to talk, you probably need more of a qualitative research strategy, where you're actually talking to victim service providers, sexual assault nurses, and things like that, and maybe even victims themselves, to try to get a sense for, is that, is that, is that drop that we saw, or the change that we saw between 2017 and 2018, is that a pattern, or that we could expect to continue? And if so, is there something that we can leverage there to try to, to try to help reduce the overall incidence of sexual assault in San Jose? And then finally, I know there's been some significant legislative changes in California in resulting prosecution changes around drugs. And it would be interesting to me to see if there is a linkage between the changing drug laws and prosecutions and sexual assaults. Do we find more offenders, for example, who have drugs in their system? Same with victims. Is that, is there a correlation there? We don't know that, and we don't, and we didn't look at that, we don't have those data. But I think it's worth exploring in the future. And that's the conclusion of my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Vice Mayor, that actually concludes our presentation, and then we will open it up to question and comments.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for the presentations, and we have some public speakers. If you haven't filled out a card, please fill one out, so we know that you want to speak. I want to call Kate Lee Hayne, Sharon, Donna, Dania, Dania? Sure, I wasn't even close. Miriam? Is there a Miriam? And Shereen? Is there a Shereen? Or it could be Sharon twice. Or it could be Sharon twice. Anyway. Okay. Please come forward.
So I'm one of dozens of sexual assault victims from Presentation High School, and I applaud the council and the police for doing this hard work and analysis. Now, as you work to decrease incidents of assault, I urge you to consider how the lack of investigation and prosecution of predators affects occurrence rates. For example, Jeff Hicks, a registered sex offender, has yet to be investigated for the assault of a 16-year-old girl. The police assigned a case ID number, but have yet to do any investigative work. He's currently free in San Jose to reoffend. Furthermore, you need to investigate and prosecute the enablers of sexual assault, like the administrators at Presentation High School, who covered up multiple incidents of sexual assault and allowed a pedophile to remain at the school for 20 years. I and several others would not have been molested had they followed the law. This is not a simple failure to report. Per Senator Bell, this is conspiracy and child endangerment. As you work to increase victim cooperation, I urge you to consider how your tactics affect that. Like failing to return phone calls and emails from victims. Like sergeants threatening to hang up on people, which happened to me and a victim's mother. Like police failing to include key evidence in police reports, as happened in the assault case, assault and penetration case, of a 14-year-old girl. Police actions directly affect victim cooperation. As you go forward with this analysis, don't forget to embrace the basics. Believe and support and respect the victims. Investigate and prosecute offenders and enablers. Help us get justice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Denova, with the South Bay Coalition on Human Trafficking. I'm here to, three points that we wanted to bring. Human trafficking, of course, is an intersectional issue, so we sexual, see sexual assault crossover, as well as domestic violence. We partner with the San Jose Police Department's Human Trafficking Unit and Vice Unit in a variety of ways, and we want to echo a few key points of support. So one is that we really do support an intersectional approach when we're talking about sexual assaults. This includes cross-training and identification. We know that work has already started in terms of being able to identify intersectionally with domestic violence cases, and so that's a great start. So we want to echo the support and continue funding for these special victims units. We know that the Police Department in general has been trying to build capacity overall, but we really need to build capacity in these special victim units, even if that means building in an intersectional way, so it's a larger, larger unit. We really do support that. We support the cross-training and that, and then proactive partnership. And proactive partnership, I think, is especially important when we're talking about outreach events. So doing outreach at schools, it's really great to have service providers and law enforcement working together, but that takes a lot of time. And again, we need, we need more individuals to be able to participate in those events. So the other piece to that also is, we know that with the Human Trafficking Unit, it's quite small. All the special victims units are really quite small. And we would advocate for longer periods of time, that individuals right now, I believe officers are in there for maybe three years. We would advocate for a maximum. Human trafficking cases take a long time to even investigate, but on top of that, it really takes time to build rapport and partnership with service providers. And so, once, once we start working with an officer, we find that they really start developing really good victim-centered skills, and then they get transferred out into another unit. And so we just wanted to advocate for extension of being able to be in those units. And then the third thing was, we wanted to just call attention to, and I think the council has mentioned and noticed, that there is a really under-representation of reports from the API community. And so on, on our side with regards to trafficking, we're seeing large trends with regards to illicit massage establishments and residential brothels, and those are disproportionately impacting Chinese and Vietnamese women. And so, in that regard, we would, we would advocate for really culturally responsive capacity building there, again, in terms of training, but also bringing in officers who have the capabilities to work with those communities. And, yeah, those were the three points. But we, we thank you for continued discussion on this issue.
Thank you. If you've not heard your name called, I have one more card, I can't make out the writing. Can you come forward, please?
Sylvia. Hello, my name is Marlena Sturm. I'm the Medical Director of the Center for Child Protection at VMC. The Center for Child Protection is the program that is part of Santa Clara Valley Medical Center, where we care for children who've been physically and sexually abused. I talk about the Center for Child Protection like it's a large institution. It's actually me and Mary, my colleague, Mary Ritter, who has been performing the vast majority of SART exams for children who have been, who may have been sexually abused for more than 30 years. Mary is an extraordinary resource and blessing to our community, and I don't think I could say that enough. I personally perform most of the child physical examinations for children in Santa Clara County. A couple of things. First of all, I would like to thank Lieutenant Anderson for your collaboration with us and visible participation this last year. We are very grateful for our relationship with San Jose PD and for our growing, for our growing collaboration. As many of you know, we are looking forward to the establishment of a child advocacy center on the O'Connor Hospital site, probably within two years. For those of you who don't know what a child advocacy center is, I'm going to take a moment to tell you, because I think it's so important that everyone really understands what it is. A child advocacy center is a national model for how to evaluate children who may have been physically or sexually abused. There are more than 900 CACs across the United States. Santa Clara County is way behind. We should have had a child advocacy center 20 years ago. Thank goodness, it looks like we're going to have a child advocacy center soon. The point of a child advocacy center is to allow a victim to be evaluated by all of the services that need to see them. In other words, it is victim-centric rather than provider-centric. Okay? So when a child comes to the child advocacy center, they're going to be evaluated by a forensic interviewer, with collaboration by DFCS, Police Department, other forms of law enforcement, the DA's office, advocacy services, including YMCA, Community Solutions, and the medical providers. Am I running out of time? You look like I'm running out of time. So we very much need your collaboration as we begin to plan the CAC, and as we look forward to staffing up the CAC, to make sure that we create a truly collaborative environment for the evaluation of children in Santa Clara County.
Thank you.
Please know that I'm right down the street, and if you need me, that's where you can find me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ritter?
I am Mary Ritter, I'm the primary examiner at the Center for Child Protection, and I prepared a written statement, which I think you all have, so I'll just highlight a little bit. Again, we thank this, we thank everyone for including us in this conversation, and I want to mostly reiterate what Dr. Sturm just said, that a child advocacy center is going to make a lot of difference for how children are cared for in this county. We are seeing about 100 child sexual abuse cases a year at the Center for Child Protection, and if, you don't have to look very hard at the data that you got from the San Jose Police to see that, that's a small number of the, the number of children that are being reported about child sexual abuse. And what I know is that a lot of those children aren't reporting details that need a big-time forensic examination. A lot of times, children don't report anything until much later, and so we're not getting evidence for the crime lab, that sort of thing. But families are very interested in their child having a medical exam, even if, even if the allegation seems kind of simple. I hear a lot of "just fondling," "the child was just fondled." And so the sense is, they don't need an exam, then nothing happened. But that's not how parents see it, and that's, I don't see it that way either. I think that we have to take seriously any time a child says anything about something having happened, because children don't explain things very well. So access is a big deal, and I think that as the child advocacy center model moves along and we get there, we're going to have access to a lot more children. So San Jose Police is going to be sending us more cases, they're probably going to have more cases to investigate. So I'm glad we're looking at this. There, there needs to be good interviewing, that we've got an interview center that's doing state-of-the-art interviews, and that's going to happen even more when we have a child advocacy center. And then we'll get more good, good histories and more need for evaluation. We need to, we need to continue to work with service providers. We always include service providers in our evaluations, but we'd like to think that service providers, like the YWCA and Community Solutions, could be involved early on in, in cases.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Lindsay?
My name is Adriana Caldera, I'm the Chief Program Officer at YWCA Silicon Valley. I just had three points that I wanted to provide some support for. One, I want to applaud the intersectional approach that San Jose Police Department is putting forward. We are a partner with San Jose PD on a high-lethality response team pilot, and this is a pilot that will allow survivors to be connected to an advocate fairly shortly after an incident has happened. So just very appreciative of that intersectional approach to better support survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking. Second, I just wanted to highlight the call for more prevention education, and to echo Sharon's comments previously, to make sure that we're providing prevention education programs that focus on culturally competent programs, and focus on specific populations such as the API community and the LGBTQ community. And to look for potential proposals that go beyond school-based prevention, and to focus on places where people gather within our local community. And third, support for the recommendation for providing trauma-informed training to sexual assault investigators. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, want to invite Rick, or Rich, or, either Rich or Rick.
Good morning. My name's Lindsay Mansfield, I'm also with the YWCA, and I wanted to put in my vote of support for San Jose PD having more detectives that are dedicated to these cases. We recently got an advocate that's within the unit, and that's providing additional support, and some of that trauma-informed piece, but there aren't enough. You saw the number of cases that come through, and each of those numbers is attached to a person. So I can't stress enough how important it is to have, you know, as many folks working on these cases as possible. I'd also like to echo the intersectional approach. We very rarely see individuals that are experiencing one trauma. There's usually an intersection of domestic violence, sexual assault, and sometimes the human trafficking. And then, lastly, I would like to say that the education piece is very important, and doing the other things that Adriana mentioned, focusing on the API community, the LGBTQ community. But know that within the education programs, while we're focusing on that, we're also deepening our relationships and able to provide additional resources outside of the school. So, thank you.
My name's Rick Beatty, and my wife and I are founders of the Alessandra Foundation, which, as many of you know, is a domestic violence advocacy group. I'm here, I wasn't planning on speaking, just here to support what you're doing, and I appreciate all the work that's been done. And, you know, from what I'm hearing thus far, it's a matter of resources, and I know that you're all challenged, and I see $690,000, and I'm sure there's more to support that, but that seems like a drop in the bucket when you need a special victims unit expansion, you need more staff, you need more officers on the street. And the one thing I, that keeps coming to me is, I'm hearing a lot, these studies talk to me about the symptoms, and the root of the problem, you know, when we get to families, when I see these families talked about, you know, these are real people, and they have real family issues. And I look at, why, why do people commit these crimes? And they, they learn it in their communities, they learn it in their families. The young man that murdered my daughter had a father who was on Meghan's list, because he molested his daughter, which was the murderer's sister. So that's the kind of, of family that he grew up in. So you talk about intersectionality that we talked about. That's all there, but that, that goes to the root. How did that happen? Why did that start? And I think we need to start paying a little bit more attention, the YWCA's got great programs to educate at the, at the elementary, middle school, high school, and college age, that we're not using, we're not accessing those. These people have worked their butts off to get these great programs to educate. And sexual assault and domestic, all those things are covered, and it's all really about respect. So I thank you all for the work that you're doing. It's great to have this discussion, and I hope we have more, and I hope we have more people here, talking about it and shining this light on the issues that are out there. But it really goes, let's find what the root is, and start educating at the family level. It starts, you know, coaching men into boys, and Nextdoor Solutions has a program on that. So, anyway, thank you all for what you're doing, thank you for everything you're doing very much. Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you. Erica?
Hello, good morning. My name is Erica Elliott, I'm the Sexual Assault Program Manager at Community Solutions, and I mainly cover South Santa Clara County. And I, but we also work with San Jose Police Department on human trafficking and domestic violence, and we also partner them, with them. I wanted to echo a couple different things from the data. One thing, I think, not just for San Jose PD, but I think county-wide, we're seeing an increase since 2013 in the broadening of the definition of forcible rape, as well as with a lot of the educational movements, within Title IX education, with that at college campuses, Me Too, Blasey Ford coming out last year. We're seeing an increase for sexual assault survivors in general to come forward and speak their truth for the first time in a long time. The other thing I think that is an issue that hasn't, and I know in the Police Department's memo to you all, and report, one of the issues is the SA unit, the sexual assault unit is very robust, and has ICAC 290 registrants, sexual assault detectives, human trafficking, they cover a lot, and they need more support. If you have 1,000 cases and you have 40 detectives, that means each detective is running through cases consistently, so looking at the expansion of that. One thing I really appreciate is the report itself, because we're not looking at data truly as a county, to look at how many cases are reported at this level. Most jurisdictions, if I was to ask Gilroy or another jurisdiction, "Can you tell me how many sexual assault cases have been investigated? Have they reported to you?" And what those outcomes were? We don't have that true data for the county as a whole. So it's great that we're being transparent in that way, to show, here's what the cases we're looking at, here's what the outcomes of those cases are, so that we can really put in interventions that can really make changes and differences. So I think that's really beneficial, and I really support and echo the need for trauma-informed training. And looking at, there was a great documentary on Netflix called Unbelievable, that really highlights how sexual assault investigations could look very different, where one, one case, they look at, like, one detective, how they came in that way, and this detective, how they came in that way, and how the outcomes could drastically change. And so I really think that that's a great opportunity to, tool, to continue to have that conversation with officers. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speakers we have. I want to, again, thank the presenters and the community for coming out to speak, and I want to thank my colleagues, particularly Councilmember Arenas and Carrasco for driving this effort, as well as my other council colleagues. I think an important point was brought up, in terms of, we're looking at these statistics... we're looking at these statistics. And we have to always remember that behind every statistic is a human being that's been affected by sexual assault. And their lives will never be the same. So, we always have to keep that in mind when we think about all the, the numbers and statistics that we see. I want to bring it back to council and Councilmember Camus.
Thank you. I also want to thank the staff, especially our college professor for his work on this. I find the, the statistics that were interesting. I think the first set of statistics only looked at 18 and 19, but your statistics went all the way back to 2013. And I think you alluded to something that I'm, I've been asking for, if there's any correlation between the rise in, in sexual assaults and that of the measures Prop 47 and Prop 57 passing. To me, I think you are actually providing evidence that they do correlate. I could, Prop 47 passed in 2014? 14? Is, did you see an uptick in the difference between what happened before 2013 and after? Because, because Prop 47 released a whole mess of drug offenders from, from prisons. And I think that's what you were alluding to in your presentation.
I think it's definitely, I mean, again, from an analytic standpoint, it's certainly worth looking at. You know, we didn't do that specifically. We didn't, we sort of was outside the scope of our charge. We didn't have the data to look at that empirically. But, you know.
This is, this was, this was going to be my next question. Is there a way, any way to find out if the people who are being arrested for domestic abuse or sexual assault have a previous criminal record that they were released on? I think that, that's a step that needs to be taken to see if there's actually true correlation or not.
That, among other things, I would agree with you, Councilmember. And, yeah, I mean, it's certainly, from a research standpoint, doable.
Yeah. And this is kind of what I've been, what I was asking for in the, in the original recommendation when it went to staff to look at. I, I think it's, it's, it's not just enough to throw up some statistics and say, here's the, here's, you know, here's what's happening. It's good to look at, why is this stuff happening? And can it be, you know, I, I know that there's other statistics, like, you know, we're not, we're not researching and investigating these things fast enough. And so, those are all very, very good outcomes from this meeting, and I, and I applaud them. But if we're not going to look at the effects of statewide laws that have affected criminality and domestic, and domestic violence and abuse and rape, I think it's kind of like closing your eyes to one huge potential problem. And I think that needs to be, that needs to go forward. More needs to be done to see if there's a correlation. If there is, I think this would be a study worth publishing statewide. Because everybody thinks that, you know, there's, you know, after Prop 47, everything is, is great. I don't think so. And I think the statistics that you showed us today really spell that out. And I'm hoping that our chief can actually go forward and bring us even to see if we can find true correlations or true evidence. I, I know that it's not a straight line at this point. But I'd like to see, of the people who were arrested for domestic violence and/or rape, had they had previous offenses that they were released on? That, that would help me take a look at this, at least in a, I wish we had our local statistician, a council member here, but she doesn't look like she's here. But to me, I think more needs to be done on analyzing the correlation between Prop 47 and now Prop 57 too, because it passed in 2016. And I don't know if there has been a huge rise between, you know, let's say, 2017, when they start releasing folks early, or not. I think more needs to be done on, on that issue as well. But to me, I, I really appreciate the data. I'm kind of a data-driven person myself. But I think we need to even delve deeper into the data to find out true correlation and not just, you know, trends.
Right. No, I would agree. And, and, and that was one of our recommendations, specifically around the, the impact of the various changes in criminal justice reform and drug laws, in particular in California, and how those may have impacted sexual assaults in San Jose.
Yeah. I think, look, I think we're on the verge of doing some great work here. I, I think we need to, to continue. And this could, this could educate the whole state. And it's not just the city of San Jose that, that could benefit from this work. I appreciate the, the chief and staff for all the work that they're doing. I, I do concur on many of the points that we talked about. It's always good to have more, more staff involved in these issues. And, and I know the chief is working hard to rebuild our police force. I appreciate him and all, all their efforts to do, to do that. But I'm looking forward to your next report. I hope this isn't the last time we look at this issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Arenas.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the police department for the work that you've done so far. We've been kind of on a windy road, if you will. And we, we started with a joint meeting over with the county, which propelled us into our, looking into our own recommendations and system improvements, internal system improvements, which is something that I really would like for us to focus on. And maybe also take a look at what the trends are telling us and what the data's telling us. I want to thank you, Chief, for your memo that outlines part of your next steps and the work that you were already doing. And I want to just point out that you began this work right after we finished our joint meeting and then our subsequent June meeting. And I know that you've added five officers to the sexual assault unit. And I see, and I'm really excited about the next five with a total of 10. Am I correct in saying that there's going to be a total of 10 additional officers with the five that you already have? So, on page four, you have, let me see, where is it? "As funding becomes available, the department would like to add one SVU lieutenant, one sergeant, and five additional detectives to meet SAIU demands." So, if you already have five that you've included earlier this year, and these, and this additional five, I'm counting 10.
This is, is what our goal is, if, if the budget allows, in working with the city manager's office within, within the budget. But that is what, that is a priority for us.
Thank you. And I, I want to commend you for, for suggesting the creation of this special victims' unit. As we know, our city is plagued with many different types of crimes. Last year, you established a burglary unit because we know that there was a lot of burglaries in San Jose. And it's one of the, the issues that our residents were having a really difficult time with, especially around the holidays. And so, I think it's only befitting to have an SVU unit. And I would highly support that and ask our city manager to figure out how we can make this more viable. As I see the data, it, it really tells us that we need a lot more support for these two units, for the sexual assault unit. So, I want to start with, not finished with that one, sorry. I also want to note that you're doing some great work on the connection between strangulation and lethality. And I don't want it to get lost in, in some of the data that we've gone over. So, I think there's a lot of really good work. I think a lot of our, our public comment noted on the intersectionality work that you are all doing. And I just, I want to commend you for that. And also for your proposal to have ethnic-based work group and agencies so that they can help inform what we're doing. Because as we see the numbers and the data, they're telling us. There's a lot of specific ethnicities that are impacted. And so, we know that we need to make sure that we have strategies that are appropriate. I also want to thank a lot of our, our guests today for coming in and for taking the time to, to be here to listen. And also, for the work that you're doing outside of, out of the, outside of the chambers. You do this every day. It's difficult work. And you're our warriors for our children. And so, I really want to thank you for all of that because you help prevent some of the future crimes that we typically see in adults, which is the domestic violence, the human trafficking, and the sex work. Although it's not exclusive to, to adults. We know that, that these young survivors have a higher propensity to take any one of those tracks. And so, you help prevent some of that. And I want to thank you for, for all the work that you're doing. I want to move next to the UTSA study. I found that, anecdotally, I didn't think that the Me Too movement was the reason for the increase of rape over the last 10 years. And, and I'm grateful that you made that connection. Actually, I'm sorry, for the change in the rape definition in 2013 and we've implemented in 2015. And so, I know that's across all categories. And I just want to thank you for, for making sure that we knew that. One of the most alarming things that I've found was that we are, within sexual assault, we are above the national average. And so, for the number of, of police officers and detectives that we have, we should also rise to addressing these issues appropriately with our funding and with resources. I also note that on page nine, we are consistently, over, over time, the same ethnicities are found either in victims and assailants and perpetrators. And so, one of my thoughts was, and suggestions is, why not dive a little deeper there? If we know that a lot of the data, what the data's telling us is that it's within these certain communities. And I'm not saying it's exclusive to these communities because, as we all know, all of these crimes affect all of us. It doesn't matter class, race, income levels. But I would like to have us dig a little deeper into those categories. I'm not comfortable saying that that's just the trend and leave it as is. So, I would appreciate a deeper evaluation of, of some of those ethnicities that are being impacted. On page 11, we also have the relationship type. Sexual assault by a relationship. And acquaintances and strangers have maintained, have been always the top two. And so, because these are the top two categories, I've wondered, are these assailant? What is the relationship with acquaintances? Are they, and I didn't see it on page nine in terms of the location type. Are they living in the same household as the victims? I know that we, we had kind of a generic category of either private locations, either private or public. I would also venture to say that we would learn something about maybe some of those 25 categories of places that you all had. You didn't mention them here, but I would like to see if they, and I don't know if this is, this would cross or intersect. But I would like to know if those assailants were living in the same residence as the perpetrators, I mean, as the, the victims. Which isn't the same thing as figuring out the location, correct?
Yeah. No, that is correct. Unfortunately, we didn't have the, the data to answer that particular question. It's a good question, and I, I agree, it's, it would be worth exploring. But we didn't have the information that we would need to, to address it.
Mm-hmm. So, I know anecdotally, just speaking with, with some of our service providers, and I don't want to put anybody, point any fingers, but I know that anecdotally, you, you've mentioned to me that you've seen, you've seen some of the trends in terms of having overcrowding, housing overcrowding, and multiple families living in one location as maybe possible access to some of these children. And I would like to have us figure out how we can track that. How can we track whether the assailants are living in the same residence as our victims? Lastly, I also want to go back to page nine and ask, I know that you, in this one, I think, no, 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 it wasn't page nine. You had a slide, where was it? It was the, the slide that you highlighted. And you thought that in 2018, the number of reports were older reports, older than one month. And I think you, it was something about maybe 14 months. And so, in that, I, I wanted to ask, what, what percentage of those victims were actual adults? Do you know the, the slide that I'm referring to? Can you? What slide is that?
I do. It's figure 11 on the, on the report itself. And it's slide, on the slideshow.
15.
16?
Oh, 16. There we go. So, did we have the, the, you're making this assumption because you're seeing a longer, a, a difference between when the incident happened and when that victim reported? But did we actually ask, do we have the ages of those victims? Is that something that we can actually confirm?
Yeah. I think, if I understand the question, the question is, has there been a change in the length of reporting by the age of the victim over time? Is that your question?
Well, okay. So, let me, I noticed that in, in the San Jose PD presentation, and I know this is 2019 and this wasn't related to the UTSA data, that you had on page six or slide six, where you're talking about victim demographics, race, and role. You have an asterisk there saying, adult victims reporting 288 LLs under 14 years were classified as adult victim in San Jose PD's records management. So, there's a difference, right, between the juvenile victims and the adult victims reporting a crime when they were juveniles? So, I guess I wanted to know whether that is something that you found to conclude that the 2018 numbers were from the Me Too movement?
Well, we, we, so we did not look at the timed reporting broken down by age of the victim. That, that was, we didn't get into that level of detail on that, on that particular slide or in the analysis that underlied it. It could, potentially could be done, if we had enough cases, to, to look at it, you know, look into it further. We didn't do that, but, but it's an interesting question.
Thank you.
Councilmember, can I just, just say one thing? One dynamic that, that happened in this particular case that generally doesn't? And I know Dr. Smith probably won't allude to it, but I have to, is that generally speaking, when we ask someone to come in to research and give us findings, we do it on their timeline. So, as an example, I would have said, you know, if we would have reached out to UTSA and said, hey, we need X done. When you're done with everything you got to do, then we'll schedule it to come and present. Because we, because the Because we, because the timeline was probably not the way, and it's not probably, it's pretty much never the way we should do research. Dr. Smith has to bid the best he could with the information we had to be able to come to you with some very pertinent info. So, that's why some of these intricate questions can't necessarily be answered. That's part of the dynamic.
Thank you, Chief. And you know, I would have liked to have known that fact, that of course, we all know research takes time, and especially qualitative research. I know this is, I would have preferred to have you take your time and to give us a deeper dive and to actually include some of that qualitative research that I feel is missing here. It's a lot of data sets, right? But there's a lot of, there's a lot of information that we need to continue to learn. And I think that's the next step. You know, what is done is done. This is where we're at. I didn't realize asking for an update, which was our summer memo, Chief, would also create this issue for our researcher. Otherwise, I would have stepped my foot off the gas on that and said, let's do this research. Let's take this time, let's dig a little deeper because that's kind of what we're doing, we're going to ask for anyways, right? I think we're all very intrigued about what the data is telling us. And so, now it's our responsibility to figure out and follow that data, right? So, I just want to make sure that when we have some data points, especially Professor, you had some, a couple of data points that you theorized on. I just want to make sure that they're, that we were, that they're accurate. And I think it's the time that really didn't allow for us to go into some of these details. And the reason why I'm very curious about this is because in the 2019, with Angelie's data that she brought forward to us from, looking back at 2019, we can see that most of the victims are children, that they are not in fact adults. And we can see that on page six or slide six, which we see 446 juvenile victims. And then, victims, adult victims were only 29. And so, for me to have one data set that tells us maybe these are older adults reporting crimes from the past, and then the very next year have something quite the opposite, is, makes me want, makes me want to look at this even more, right? And it makes me want to ask, what is, how can we make sure that we're concluding or looking at the same data set and accurately looking at data trends? And so, for me, that's one of the recommendations I would like to make is to continue with this research so we can figure out what exactly is happening, especially for some of these, the data highlights that you have here, which is for me, when the ethnicity is definitely one of them. And in the age of the assailants as another. I also was very saddened that we're above national average for sexual assault. And I think for aggravated assault, if I remember correctly. So, that's the UTSA data. I'm going to move over to the San Jose PD presentation. So, in this one, I wanted to ask, on page nine, you have the demographics of race and role for the assailants. But these are arrest numbers and not necessarily, I just, I don't understand why it was only the arrest numbers.
That's correct. It's just the arrests and citations, or juvenile arrests and citations that was measured for this update.
So, if we would have taken one step back, Angelie, and taken a look at the race and role of assailants, regardless of whether they were arrested or not, or given a citation, I venture to say this would look a lot higher. Because at this point, in, under the Hispanic, Latino, Mexican, there's nine arrests. In the African-Americans, there's three arrests, under arrest and citation, then in juvenile arrests, there's an additional three. And when we take a look back, I think at some of those assailants, African-Americans don't rise to the top, to the second number. It was first Hispanic or Latinos, then it was whites, and then it was Asians. But yet, here in the arrest, we see African-Americans as a number two, which doesn't connect with what we see most perpetrators. And I think this information comes from previous slides, but most assailants are of the same race as those victims, correct?
Correct. Because numerically, the numbers are smaller, you do see it differently. But we can provide for the next update, a more expansive version of suspects and arrests.
Thank you. No, I can appreciate the small number. And I think even with the small number, this is means there is, these, this number of folks are off the streets, or at least in our legal system, and having some consequence. I just would, I would venture to say that the arrests would reflect some of the, what the perpetrators' race and role are versus what I'm seeing here. And so, I would like for you to include that additional information so that we can take a look at that and see what that correlation is.
Most certainly.
Thank you. So, this year's numbers show clearly, and this is from page six, it shows clearly that these are children. And these are children and not adults who are reporting when they were children, a crime when they were children. And so, because of that, I really, I'm taken to some of the comments that Mary Ritter and some of our service providers gave me prior to this meeting, in which we, you know, we all agreed that we should start taking a look at younger children as targets. I know that in, I funded that curriculum for our high school students, which I think is absolutely useful. We should be talking about healthy relationships. We should be doing some of that support. I also think because of what we're seeing, that we also should include some younger children, or at least partner with some of our service providers who can support parents and children because parents need that training just as much as the children do. We're the ones who help prepare them for when they enter preschool or other places or childcare. And we need to make sure that we're sharing with them how to prevent some sexual abuse, or at least stand up for themselves and share with us when that unfortunate thing happens. So, that's what really spoke to me about these numbers, was that these numbers are telling us what our service providers are sharing with us, right? I also was very surprised that, I think, and this is just, I think, an average of 27 and 55 cases per year that are being investigated and that are being seen by the pediatric SART team for evaluation. I don't think these are, I think this is, this is a good effort, guesstimate. And you know, that our service provider, Mary Ritter, who's also the SART team examiner, gave this just wonderful summary of what they are seeing and what she's seeing and Dr. Sturm is seeing in her system, and how we can actually improve what we're doing so that their outcomes are also greater, our outcomes are also greater. And so, one of the things that I'd like to highlight is to make sure that we continue to focus. And I know that this was really important to you, Chief, and it was part of your report, that the education piece was really important. And I think we need to see what the data is telling us and data is telling us, whether it's the UTSA or the San Jose PD report, the report is telling us that these are young children. And so, it's left to us to figure out what it is that we need to do to make sure that we support those victims the best that we can. And so, one of those items was in Mary Ritter's report, where she makes a recommendation, obviously, three and four-year-olds are really very difficult to interview. And so, I know that there is, there is a recommendation for a forensic. And Mary, maybe if you could come down and help me sort this out. But I know that one of the recommendations was to have a peer-reviewed interviewer. And I think the peer-reviewed interviewer is important because I think research shows that when you have that type of interviewer who's peer-reviewed, they're more successful than those who are not peer-reviewed, correct? And so, so these are some of the highlights that came from your report. And I think it came from reading both of these data reports and looking at your own internal processes and how those intersect. And could you talk about some of those highlights? I've kind of mentioned the three to four-year-olds, the interviewer, the forensic interviewer, peer-reviewed. And I think there's a couple of more.
Well, again, we do see a lot of young children, little ones who say enough probably to somebody to raise the flag that something may have happened, but not good in, they're not good at describing details. So, the police detective is having a hard time figuring out if something happened. And so, we get, we see those children, and when they're interviewed, that's a real challenging interview. We hope that it's being done by someone with a lot of experience with young children. And the movement around the country is to use professional interviewers who are trained in evidence-based, state-of-the-art methods that are case-reviewed. Even the best interviewer gets reviewed and reviewed and reviewed. Other people sit down and look at their, at their work and make sure that what they're doing is right and make suggestions. So, and that's part of the Child Advocacy Center. If we're fully accredited as a Child Advocacy Center, we'll be doing that. We'll be doing state-of-the-art interviews that are case, that are peer-reviewed. And, but it's not too soon to start doing that now.
I think you noted that you also used to get a lot of direct calls from the sexual assault unit. And I don't know what's changed, and probably something that we saw in the report, and we all know, is that there was a decrease in numbers of our police officers. We've seen a lot of those folks who had that experience under their belt leave. So, can you talk a little bit more about that and how your, both of these agencies interact? Because I believe it begins with a SART, approval of a SART exam, correct?
Yeah, yeah. By state law, medical people can't bill insurance for forensic exams. It has to be that it's billed to police, and police are aware of that. And so, what happens is that if we're going to do a forensic exam, we're going to be sending the police a bill, so we need to get it authorized. We need to get their permission to do an exam and send them a bill. In the old days, and I go back 30 years, we had, we were seeing 500 to 600 cases a year. And police detectives were calling us and referring those in. Over the years, that has changed. And I think some of it is because numbers are down, and certainly staffing is down, and probably training has been changed. So, that nowadays, we don't, we hear about acute cases. We don't hear about everything that comes into the police department. And I take responsibility for some of that, that I think we're not out there informing people enough. But we need to, we are happy to be seeing children even when it isn't authorized. We make a big deal of that, of the business about billing police departments. But a growing number of the cases that we're happy to see are kids where the police aren't really needing an evidence exam. And so, they're not going to authorize, but we can bill insurance. What I see as something that we need to be doing is to reach out to the community of people who are in touch with child sexual abuse victims and make sure that they know that they can always call us, whether or not the police have authorized, so that we can, we can offer an exam. What we usually, what usually happens these days is that they go to their own doctor, and their doctor is not very happy to see them for a child sexual abuse concern. They're not, they're not trained, they don't know kind of the system, they don't know the services, and they don't want to come to court. So, the doctor pretty quickly tells, we're getting the word out to doctors in the community so that they let us know, or they will have their parent, their patient call us. And we're happy to do that. So, I'm looking at, this has been a good review of numbers and what we could be offering, and what the Child Advocacy Center will get more children to us. But we need to be providing services to more kids than we are.
Thank you. I think it's a moment of reflection, right, internally for yourself, for us, for the city of San Jose, to figure out how we can better work with one another. So, I hear from you is that we need to reestablish that communication link that we used to have with our sexual assault unit. And I think this is something just for you, but you know, your connection with some of the medical clinics that typically will see young children. And lastly, I heard you say, and I don't know if, Mary, you want to speak about this, or Dr. Sturm, or she stepped out.
She went back to clinic.
But there is, there is a payment issue, right? So, if you don't get an approval from a police officer, then you don't have that exam. And if you don't have that exam, then that family doesn't get to connect with an advocate or with a system of support that could help them maybe become better or more cooperative in these cases, or just understand the process a little bit more.
A lot of cases meet their advocate at our, at our evaluation. So, yes, it's, it's not unusual to have a victim meet the child, the victim's service advocate for the first time at our evaluation. So, we see that as a real strength of the evaluation, even though a lot of times, we're not finding evidence. It isn't the case that just because the police don't authorize that we're not going to see the child. If we know about the case and the police don't authorize, we can still do it. And we can bill, as long as we're not billing for a forensic exam, and we're not, if the police aren't authorizing, then we can bill insurance. So, that's, that's a real possibility. And it could very well be that we'd be doing more of those cases, those unauthorized, but parent wants the exam, and we're going to bill it to their insurance. We could be doing a lot of those. It's just a matter of finding out who they are. The police hear about them, Department of Family and Children's Services hear about them. I don't hear about them unless the police do send a case over, or they go to their doctor, and the doctor calls me, or the parent, the family calls and says, can we get a, can we get an exam? And then, we can do it that way. So, we are able to see children, all children at this point. Someday, maybe we'll run out of space. But right now, we can see anybody that comes along. And they get the, they pretty much get the full evaluation, whether or not it's authorized or not. It's just, where do we send the bill? Do we send it to the police, or do we send it to their insurance? And if we're not doing an authorized forensic exam, we're not sending a kit to the crime lab. So, the police officer doesn't have to be there. We can, it's just a matter of providing a service to the family and the child.
And do you know if there has been, and I don't want to say that there is an issue, but has there, what are the numbers, what do they look? but has there, what are the numbers, what do they look like in terms of, of not having approval for a child? I know that you said that typically this child will get this exam no matter who's paying for it. But if we have a police officer who's on the scene, they will not refer them to you if they don't think that they should have an examination. I think maybe that's also where we're not communicating with one another.
Right. I mean, and there are good reasons that police decide they don't need an exam. If the, if the child isn't saying something that's pretty clear or even a little clear, then the police are often going to say, we don't, we don't know that a crime even happened. And so that's, that's a legitimate reason to not authorize. But on the other hand, the parent might, the parent who was the one that maybe heard from the three-year-old, who's not now talking to the police detective or the police officer, but the three-year-old talked to mom, and mom's got that ringing around in her head, what the three-year-old said, and she still would like to have an exam. So we can do that, and we'll, we'll bill it to her insurance. The fact that we know about it is a good thing, so that then we can make that connection. My worry is the number of cases that are out there that don't get to us, that they didn't go to the doctor, so the doctor doesn't tell them to call us. How can we get in touch with them? And I think that's a systems thing that we, we need to work on.
Great.
But we can, we can provide service to anybody who comes along and is interested.
Thank you, Mary. I'm going to, you can go ahead and take a seat. I know that, that the police department was already working with the county executive and other relevant agencies, and I would suggest that we include the Director for Center for Child Protection, which is Dr. Sturm or Mary Ritter, who is actually the examiner and coordinator, but that we have that level of feedback as they are seeing some of the, their own internal system improvements and some of those improvements that interact with our agency. I think it's important to have that level of feedback at those work groups. And so, Dave, I want to ask you, I know that this is something that the city manager's office is, is leading. Would you agree that we need to have somebody at the table that, that can observe some of these system improvements or has the ability to suggest that some of these system improvements be looked at?
Well, I thank you, Councilmember, for the question. I certainly would prefer that the experts in the room kind of weigh in on what you're asking. You know, I think the department is being very responsive and is, I think, willing to look at a lot of things, but I'd rather have Eddie kind of weigh in on kind of his perspective here.
As far as having, as far as hearing from their perspective how system improvements can be made as we work with the county, I don't, I mean, I don't see there being an issue with having another voice at the table from that perspective.
You wouldn't, I'm sorry.
I don't see an issue with having another voice at the table to talk about systems improvements.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. I really appreciate that. I think this, sometimes there's these protocols that we used to engage in when we had a lot more officers, and then all of a sudden, we had to make sure that we were getting some of the essentials completed, and we lose some of those protocols, and not because it's not, they're not important, it's just because our focus is on, on some other immediate crimes. And so I know this, I don't know, I just ventured to say that this could be something that was lost in that, in that process. But I think that it's essential to have that communication between the Sexual Assault Unit and the Center for Child Protection. I think there's some system improvements there that could happen, especially around the interview with three- to four-year-olds, with the insurance question. And, and my question for San Jose Police Department is, how many kids are we referring to a SART exam? That would be something that I would like to know. So from, from the numbers that we've seen in the past, or maybe just for this year's numbers, Angelique, for the 401 numbers, I like to see, how many of those did we refer to a SART exam? And then we can continue to have this conversation about how do we improve or pick back up this protocol that, that sexual assaults used to have in connecting with the Center for Child Protection directly and referring them. And another question would be, how many, how many SART exams? I just want to figure out if cost has been a barrier. And so whether we ask for the Center for Child Protection to give us some of those numbers, or we take a look at what we've done, I just want to know if it's a barrier. If it's not a barrier, we know, I don't want to create any issues that we need to solve. But I want to make sure that as we're looking at some of these system improvements, we're asking, we're taking a look at all, everything that's involved. I think having this direct communication will, will address the increase of referrals to SART exams, and so, Chief, I'll leave it up to you. I know that you are very open to having some of these, some of these system improvements reviewed, and so I'll leave it up to your criteria in terms of where you should have this conversation. Taking a look at my last comments. The last one was the Internal Status K, and this is back to the San Jose Police Department presentation. And I appreciate that you're having a further breakdown of this so that we can take a look at what is really impacting those closure rates. And so this is on page 18 and 19. On page 20, you had lack of resources, and that could mean any of the following. Lack of staffing, lack of victim witness cooperation. And the slide that follows and the pie chart that breaks down some of these gives us a visual breakdown of some of these lack of resources, reasons for lack of resources. But it doesn't include lack of evidence. I noticed it had lack of victim cooperation, lack of investigative resources, mislabeled and unable to locate entities involved. I'd like to see the lack of evidence included and what that percentage is. And I think it's, seeing that the Center for Child Protection is seeing less numbers, that they are producing less evidence for us, possibly, or at least in exam form. The last thing is the lack of victim cooperation. I see that both this and the victim wishes to continue at a later date or requests to close the case are the highest numbers of all of the reasons why, and the reasons that are broken down further under, under Internal Status K. I was wondering, how many points of contact, when we, when we close a case for lack of victim cooperation? Wanted to understand, what does that mean? How many points of contact did we make? What kind of points of contact? And what kinds of points of contact are most effective or researched as their best practices? Do we send a letter? Do we have three calls? Do we? I'm guessing that if we don't have enough officers, that we're possibly not making enough contacts. That's a conclusion that I'm making because we don't have enough officers. Of course, our police officers have been known to do lots with very little, but I'm interested in knowing what that exactly means and defining it and maybe creating a standard for it. You know, we can't close this case based on lack of victim cooperation until we do, blah, blah, you know, three things, whatever those things are. And I don't know if they exist already.
Yes, they do. My detectives are required, one, to contact victims within three days. Second, to make numerous phone calls. The second is going out and knocking on a door and leaving a business card or contacting family members or acquaintances at that residence. And then lastly, we'd be sending a letter.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear, I'm sure that there was already, I just wasn't sure how many points of contacts that would be. Glad to see that there's a very thorough process. How many of these items need to happen in order to close the case? All of the four that you just mentioned?
If there is a residence to go knock on, then all of them have to be completed.
So would it be appropriate to say that you knocked on 38% of the total number that we saw? You sent a card, and finally, you, you sent a letter and you had phone calls with that victim or victim's family?
If that was a question, yes.
Yes. I'd like to see some of that breakdown in data as we're moving forward with how this data is evolving and knowing that, that this was, this research was done quickly because of a timeline that we asked and not because of the, the time that it needed to take to get the, the research completed. But I think I'd like to see those numbers broken down a little bit more in terms of lack of victim cooperation. I know that because we have, I've already made points about some of the ethnicities that are more prevalent in these crimes, whether they're victims or assailants, they're kind of one in the same number in terms of those, those ethnicities, right? For assailants and for victims, it's Latinos. For assailants and victims, it's whites. For assailants and victims, it's Asian, for the breakdown of Asian, as we heard earlier. Angelique, I see you nodding your head, yes. So I'd just like to make sure that we continue to evolve in our, in our research and figure out exactly what works best. And I really like, Chief, that you have this ethnic-based agency suggestion. I think that there, these two things can come together, especially with, I think our motion, the motion that I made last time we met, included having our service providers be part of that, a collaborative, a very informative approach to our training and training for our police officers, as they are doing this type of training all the time, right? We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can get to our resources a lot quickly. As I see that our training wouldn't happen until 2020, so I wonder, is there anything that we can work on with our service providers in the interim to have some additional support from them or work towards the training component that will be released in 2020?
Well, I mean, we're about a month and a half away. We're looking to start in January of 2020 is the goal.
Wonderful. So, so service providers are also included in the formulation of that curriculum?
So this type of training is a heavy lift for the police department, and there's many factors associated with it. So first, we're starting off with recognizing trauma within ourselves and trauma within victims, and then we'll be moving on the training from there. So I believe what you're referring to is in the summer memo, or there was a recommendation of ethnic-based agencies. I believe it's also listed in the Appendix A from the summer memo. Really, this, it's going to be like Phase Two of trauma-informed training is that ethnic-based agencies. Reason being is it's also in collaboration with our countywide partners, because we believe that it should be countywide that's building the ethnic-based connections. And once those, those connections are made, then that training then will come forward to our officers and so that they understand who to call, what resources to refer our victims to.
Thank you, thank you, Lieutenant. Okay, wonderful. I just want to make sure that our, the wealth of information that's sitting in this room with our service providers is made, put to really good use, right? I mean, it's already being put to really good use every day of your work life, but also to inform our system improvements. And so it would be wonderful to continue to have them inform our training plan or our training curriculum as you see fit. I just think that there's, there's a lot of potential here for support that could be, hopefully, in kind and that wouldn't add to the cost of training. So I'm going to end my, my comments and, and questions, but I do want to, I have a memo, I mean, a motion to, that I want to suggest, and that's to direct the administration to continue and expand engagement with county administration, agency, and nonprofits. It's part of the process of bringing to council recommendations for appropriating reserve funding. And to bring an appropriation request to council. And I would say, and I can take a suggestion to what that timeline would be, and I look to you, Dave, and Chief. Accept the report and work plan with the following additions. Add research and add researching answers to questions presented in the conclusion of the UT study and as, and the ones that I've included as we, in my, in my comments. Incorporate additional feedback from partner agencies into the work plan. We've ensured additional review of the SART process for potential improvements included in the work plan and inter-agency engagement. That's what we just finished discussing. And direct the administration to bring quarterly progress reports to PIS-FIS. Lastly, ensure that the City Council Board of Supervisor joint meeting moves forward in a way that is timely and can inform the work of, of staff. Do I have a second? Thank you. The county's also doing, is also independently of us during the month of November, and I forget what the date is, but they're also going to have a joint meeting with us to discuss what they've also found in the data, which is what we've recognized today, is that these are young children. And so they're taking a focus, they're going to take a deeper dive into, into looking at what, what this means for younger children. And I think that's an opportunity for us to also be at the table and learn from, from their resources and take advantage of, of some of their resources as well. So I'll be there, and I hope that my council colleagues, all who have supported me in this, in the Sexual Assault Memo that we are all part of, and I absolutely appreciate you coming forward and supporting us in this, and hopefully, we'll see you on November 20th is, is the date. We'll have a continued conversation with the county about what we're seeing with trends with children under the age of 12. And so thank you once again for all the work that you're doing. I think our system, our systems are going to be much better because of all of what you've done today, up to date today, and I know that this isn't, isn't concluded, you know, we, we're not finished, for sure. And I'm really excited to see how our research evolves and as we take into consideration some of the discussion that we'll have today. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Mary Ritter for taking the time to come over here from the hospital. It's good to see you after all these years. I know that you've testified in many, many difficult trials that have been essential for protecting the safety of a lot of children. So thank you, Mary. Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you, Mary. I just have some questions, but I also wanted to just make a comment. I appreciate everything that's being said and just, and agree with it all. Also very much appreciate the comments made by some of the speakers that this, this chamber should be full. I agree with that. But as often the case with many important things that we discuss, you know, certainly the time of day can impact that, but oftentimes, the community is just, quite frankly, unaware and trying to live life as most people do, but, but this chamber should be full. Something that stood out to me that resonates with me, and I think it encompasses and brings together a lot of what was said, was really in the conclusion of the memo, I'm just going to read a little bit of it because I think, I think it speaks to a lot of the things that were touched on, but sexual assault as a community-wide problem is difficult to address from a purely law enforcement standpoint. enforcement standpoint. More than half of sexual assaults in San Jose take place in private settings, and most involve victims and assailants who are known to one another. Community efforts to address the rise of sexual assault in San Jose must focus more broadly on education, prevention, successful investigation, and prosecution of offenders." I think that, for me and everything I've heard and read, that just really summarizes it really well. I think it's similar to some of the other challenges that we have in our city that are broader societal challenges, such as homelessness and other things that, Chief, I know you well know, that you all sometimes carry the cross of trying to, you know, help us solve some of this stuff. And I very much appreciate the efforts from the police department. I know you all do great work with seemingly thin budget and resources. And so I very much appreciate everything you guys have done. I do have just a few questions. One, the first one is for the presentation from the police department. It's really, I think it's a question on Slide 19 where it talks about lack of investigative resources. That, I mean, one of the things that comes to mind to me when I hear that and just read that just means we don't have enough officers or something like that. But, you know, it gave, in the presentation, there was a few sort of things that sort of, that can mean lack of resources. And so just the categories, for example, the seriousness of the crime. And so I was curious if you can provide us an example as to lack of investigative resources and just how the seriousness of a crime can be fall under that category? I'm trying to wrap my head around it.
So obviously, the reason why we're looking into what we call K-King, lack of investigative resources, is just the fact that serious of crime is listed under there. When we're looking, the group that we've formed and looking into those two new categories, when we're done and we roll out the training in January 2020, lack of investigative resources will mean exactly that, that there weren't enough detectives to investigate a case. Now, obviously, in sexual assaults, it's not going to happen. Maybe with very small petty property crimes, that may happen.
Okay, so the creation of those two additional categories is essentially going to make this a true... This is not, this is the current definition.
This is the current definition.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I understand. Okay. And I appreciated the new categories of, I think, lack of victim cooperation and victim requested to close cases, the other two, right? Chief, I don't know if you...
I just wanted to just add one thing, is as we're looking at this lack of resources, this is not just specific to SAIU and sexual assaults, it's for the entire Bureau of Investigations. So, you know, these would pertain to robbery cases, to assault cases, to other, every unit that we have.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. And then the seemingly consolidation or bringing together, I think, of creation of the SVU unit, that, I think it was mentioned there, I don't remember the exact language or even the numbers, but that's obviously going to take some resources, right? Or it's just going to be a matter of collapsing the existing resources in this other space that you're doing some of the work?
It's both. We're going to need some additional resources.
And so during budget season, you, we should expect that you're going to come back with, knowing that this is important to the council and certainly to the city and the residents, you'll come back with an ask of sorts, or how?
We plan on coordinating with the city manager's office and go from there.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So just another question that I had was, a few questions to Dr. Smith in the presentation. Thank you so much for coming all the way from San Antonio, have family there. I know it's not that close. So thank you for being here. And I, in the memo, I think it talked, and I think you, it was mentioned during the course of the questioning with Councilmember Arenas about just the sort of expedited timeframe that we were trying to get this done. And I realize, and I would have liked, I would have waited for a deeper dive, but I appreciate the interest in moving this along. The question I had, I guess just a broader question. So I suspect you've probably helped other cities or other jurisdictions, maybe even within Texas, sort of analyze some of the same data or similar type of work, is that?
Similar, right.
Okay. Is there, are there any overarching sort of themes, takeaways that you can sort of impart to us as a city of San Jose that you've seen in other cities that you can say, yes, this is common? And I think, as an example, I think you made a comment that nationwide, it's, we sort of see an uptick. But I think that's what someone said, or maybe you said it, but...
Yeah, so in the summary, at the end of our report, we kind of locate San Jose relative to national figures in these violent offenses, sexual assaults, as we also talk about robbery and aggravated assault. And it is true that San Jose is sort of above the national average in those offenses and particularly in sexual assaults. So that much is true. In terms of broad takeaways, there have been a couple of questions asked that are, as I indicated when I responded, they're great questions. Some cases, we didn't, we don't have the data to answer them, or readily. So in trying to diagnose these kinds of problems and respond to them effectively, as with most things, the more information you have and the better data you have, usually the better off you are in being able to make those kinds of diagnoses and then develop interventions. So, you know, to the extent that we can collect better data over time, that's always, from my perspective, and I do this sort of thing a lot, work with police departments and their data, it's always better to have better data.
Right, right.
And oftentimes, we don't.
I appreciate that. And I know, I asked this question not to, because I think it's difficult to compare jurisdictions. Sometimes we sort of look at population, other things to give us comparable, sort of apples-to-apples comparisons. But in other, have you done other work in other cities where you've had enough time or had enough data to sort of draw out and ferret out maybe more plausible sort of reasons for some of these type of things?
Right.
And the reason I'm asking is, what I'm curious about is, have other cities, for example, seen a rise in particular neighborhood? You know, I'm just trying to, I'm thinking about bigger takeaways, right? And before you answer, let me just give you an explanation as what I'm thinking. Like, what I'm curious about is, does population increase in a city sort of may increase the amount of reported crime, income, education? I'm just trying to think how some of these things play out and seeing if you can give us any sense or any takeaways from studying what other cities or jurisdictions have done that may be applicable, maybe to a certain extent, right?
Yes.
To what we're seeing here, and is there...
So sexual assault as a community-wide problem is relatively understudied. There's not a lot of literature out there, for example, on sexual assault outside of defined settings, college campuses, sporting events, things like that. You've got a community-wide sexual assault rise, which is what we have here in San Jose. That's, there's not a great roadmap for us to follow as a researcher to try to figure out what's going on and to recommend some intervention points. So that's number one. Chief and I were just talking on the ride over here. There's a growing, a growing and a fairly robust literature around what do cities do about violent crime more generally? And in recent years, we've actually developed some pretty good evidence about what works and what doesn't. So there are, there are some things, I think, that I'd be happy to discuss with the council or with the chief more broadly about violence reduction efforts that have been proven successful in other cities.
Okay, all right. Thank you. The other question I had is, and I don't remember what slide it was out of, you know, the many slides that you presented, but it was a slide that showed the percentages of acquaintance, boyfriend-girlfriend, family, sort of the relationship between the victims and such. If you could, don't mind going to that slide, I need to, if you know offhand which one I'm talking about.
Yeah.
I forgot the, I don't know, I don't think these were numbered, so I couldn't...
Right.
But I'll ask you the question as you're pulling it up. It's more a broad question. Let me see if I can find it, just to...
So Slide 12.
Okay, yeah, I'm going, I'm going there. Okay. Yeah, that one, actually. And so I just took a quick glance when you had it up here, and I, you know, one of the big takeaways for me in seeing some of the data, and I was just trying to calculate some percentages, because the question I have relates to that, but it's just that oftentimes, I think with, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but many, many crimes across the city, not all of them, obviously, but the more, a lot of the crimes typically happen amongst folks that know each other and things of that nature. There's some relation there, some maybe, and that's what I've seen in my experience, right? A lot of these crimes that happen, folks know each other, acquaintances, maybe rolling with the same friends, you know, doing, doing things of that nature. So I was trying to, so that stood out to me as it relates to some of what we're talking about. And so I calculated some percentages. So I think 58% was acquaintance, I think boyfriend-girlfriend was 8.10%,
Right.
Family, 12%, common-law, married, 3.5%. Total, that was about 81.7%. Obviously, those are all different categories, but it seems like in those categories, there is some, folks know each other to a certain extent, right? And so what I'm wondering is, is there, seeing that as a broad group of folks that know each other, is that a overly simplistic way to look at it? Or, I mean, because I almost feel like it can just be one large group of people that know each other, although I know we're trying to parse it out a little bit and...
Not at all. In sexual, in cases of sexual assaults, it's, as you just pointed out very well, the data are clear that these are offenses that occur between people that know one another. It's just a matter of the degree to which they know one another. Are they related, are they family members, are they acquaintances? Stranger crimes, which doesn't show up really well there, because it's a black line.
8.10.
But, you know, it ranges from, you know, 16 to 18% of your offenses in San Jose are stranger, stranger sexual assaults. So that leaves the other percentages, as you pointed out, that occur between people who know one another.
Right.
And that's typically higher for a crime like sexual assault than you find with other types of violent crime.
Okay. And then I was trying to wrap my head around what some of these categories included. Obviously, like married, common-law, that's, I understand that, boyfriend-girlfriend, clear, family, clear. Acquaint, so for example, the unfortunate situations that we seemingly read about more and more in the paper, right? Whether it be at Stanford or elsewhere, that, you know, a young woman goes to a party and something happens. In that particular type of circumstance, it has become unfortunately more common, at least we hear about it more. Would that fall under acquaintance? Is that, or is that stranger? Is that, like, where would something like that be categorized?
If the victim and the, and the police department can probably address this, but typically from, the way we talk about that as criminologists is if the victim and the offender knew one another prior to the event, prior to the offense, then they were acquaintances. They may have been coworkers, they may have been students together, they may have been neighbors, you know, who said hello to one another, or that sort of thing. That's what we would typically define as acquaintances.
And that would be the same for us, if the victim knew the suspect.
Okay. So in the circumstance that I try to describe, some of the stuff we hear about on college campuses, for example, they meet at a party, something happens immediately after the person's attacked, and so that would be a stranger categorization, or just because of that interaction prior to that is acquaintance?
Yeah. That's a good question, that's sort of...
It's a waffle or...
It's kind of on the line in between, right?
Okay, all right. Okay, I was just trying to wrap my head around some of the categories.
They may have been acquaintance for an hour, right, before the assault occurred.
True, true. Okay.
I'm not sure how the police department would categorize that.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, I think sometimes, what I fear is, what I, certainly, we're in a large city, we have a lot of different crimes that go on, whether it be murders, homicides, sexual assaults on children, adults, all that goes on in our city. And so I think this is important information review. We should do everything possible, whether it's resource the police department, conduct studies, give direction. I'm totally supportive of that. But what I fear sometimes is that, and I'll speak for the residents I represent, right, 100,000-plus residents, but I fear that sometimes the residents are going to think, if they see some of this or if it's presented in a certain way, they're going to think that they're walking down the park and they have a high likelihood of, you know, being taken behind the bush and raped, you know, by a stranger. And what we know based on this is that that is not all that common, right? But I just don't want to instill and peddle this fear, and not, we're not doing that. But I, but that's what I fear, right? That it can, because it can be used in a particular way that I don't think is very helpful in making certain people recognize the good work that the police department's doing and recognize that we are, in fact, I believe, a relatively safe city compared to other cities. And so I just think it's important to point that out so it's not lost in the conversation. The other thing I just wanted to say, so thank you so much, Dr. Smith. It's just seeing some of the folks from the county here. I know, obviously, the police department makes arrests, they do the good work, send it up to the DA, DA prosecutes, and obviously, in between there, you've got a lot of investigative work, folks from the county doing some of the examinations. And then I very much appreciated your comments from the folks from the county about the peer review, interviews and such. I think that's very important. You know, prior to coming here to council, I worked in the public defender's office, and I had a chance to interview many, many children that were victims of crimes. And so I think that's something that's, I'm glad it's part of the conversation, because I know those conversations, those interviews are very, very challenging. And I know they were challenging for me in my role when I was doing that, and also certainly for the police department. I very much appreciate the perspective and pushing the whole system as a whole to try to move in a more positive direction so we get better outcomes with, and really more of the reality, right, if we see what's happening with a lot of the children that are being impacted by these crimes. And so wholly support everything you guys are doing. Thank you so much, police department, and those are all my questions.
Councilmember Sparta?
Yes, I wanted to thank all the folks that came out to speak today. It's really appreciated, and thank you for the input that you've been providing as well throughout this whole process. And I'd also like to thank our city staff. You've put in a lot of work, and it does show. I had a couple of comments and then a question. And so one, what I wanted to mention about this report is, while it was helpful to learn that, you know, to go through the stats and say that the, and discover that the rate of sexual assault in San Jose is above the national average in recent years, that it's not just attributed to the national Me Too movement, that was helpful. But, you know, really, I think it would have benefited by having more time. And what we depend on is to have feedback that comes to us to say, yes, we will answer all of your questions, but this is the time that it's going to take us in order to do that, because I think we still have some questions unanswered. The second thing that I wanted to comment on was to really thank you for the section in the memo about the community and the ethnic-based organizations. I think that's huge. And I wanted to point out a couple of things. So one is, according to the SJPD's own report, as well as the input that we got from the county, is these victims are younger and younger. They're very young. And so if we're going to partner with organizations in the community, it can't just be with high schools. We really need to partner at the elementary and middle school level. And the other thing I wanted to point out was, which I think you're getting at with the ethnic-based organizations is, or agencies, is the need for language. I know my district is very diverse and a high immigrant population, and we had an incident, what month are we in? A couple of months ago, where it took a really long time to find a Vietnamese-speaking officer. And so I think it would be helpful not just to look at language capabilities and partner agencies, but to really figure out some additional strategies and how we, as a city and as a police department, can respond to some of these incidents in real time with the languages that we need. And a couple of the incidents that I'm thinking of were not something you just want to call a language line, right? They were pretty serious. And so I know that our police is under a tremendous amount of strain, but I think it would be helpful to kind of figure some of, some other things out around the language capability, which remind, which brings me to another comment, that I wanted to thank you for your honesty around police staffing. I think we're here a lot, where we ask the chief to come out a lot, and we're... I think we're here a lot, where we ask the chief to come out a lot, and we're asking our police department for all these different things, and you're facing a tremendous amount of pressure. And then on days like today, you come out and say, yes, we've added these, these new positions, and we need to add more, and we have to plan for that. And I think that's on us as a council, to keep that in mind as we come out with additional requests, because this is a department that needs to grow. I also wanted to point out the need for, I believe the professor said it, which was violence reduction. This goes back to the motion about our need to continue and expand our engagement with the county. Our county is actually investing a lot of money in violence reduction and the intersectionality of violence. And so we do need to continue that partnership, and I think actually that partnership needs to be even closer. Then I have a question on page eight of the SJPD memo around a neighborhood strategy. And so, so one of the questions was, what would, what could a neighborhood-specific strategy look like? And then I didn't quite understand the answer that was written in the memo, and so I'd like an additional explanation. And I don't know who that would be. Would that be Lieutenant Anderson or the chief?
Which memo? I have two.
Of the Sexual Assault Response and Strategy Update, page eight, dated October 8th, 2019. It's the one that goes down by recommendations. It's a list of recommendations. The memo, I think, it's the June 20th memo that was reissued in October.
Yeah, I have the memo. I'm just looking for specifically the.
Recommendation 1G.
Yes. So it also goes, I mean, the study backs up, the University of San Antonio study backs up the fact that a lot of these crimes occur in private residence, known acquaintances. So there is no specific law enforcement neighborhood strategy that can tackle things that happen behind closed doors. But that neighborhood-specific strategy should be more along the lines of outreach and education in the appropriate zip codes of those areas, as opposed to a specific law enforcement tactical reaction to these type of crimes.
So this would include crime prevention as well as the other partners? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes. So, you know, an increase in crime outreach from our crime prevention unit, but also an increase in working with and collaborating with YWCA and our other partners.
So I guess I just, I still think that having sort of a regional strategy is an issue, and there are, and how we approach that relates to resources, it relates to how partner agencies are resourced, as well as our own city kind of setting up how we're going to move forward. So I'm looking forward to seeing some more of the plans after the pilot program concludes so that we can get more information about the ages and neighborhoods that you're going to be targeting. Because I still think that there's some more work to do geographically. It's all these sort of layers on top of the other. And I wanted to point out, so the last thing I just wanted to bring up in the interest of time is, so on the last page of the USTA report, I just wanted to point something out. I know we already have a motion to approve it, but in the 1, 2, third paragraph, it mentions, for example, efforts to study changes in the homeless population over time and the involvement of homeless persons as victims and offenders in sexual assault may be fruitful. And so I actually wanted to point that out, make sure that that's something we see a lot in, or I hear a lot about in a district like mine that has Coyote Creek running through it, is that we do have a lot of unhoused residents who are victimized. And so I wanted to thank you for kind of calling that out so that we can start to capture some of that activity. That's it. Thank you.
Just a time check. It's now 11:51. Appreciate everyone's patience. We've got five more people who would like to ask questions. So I first want to check in with our guests and, and staff to see, can we, can we extend here into the lunch hour? Okay. Give us some indication if you need to.
Well, I will tell you, Mayor, I do have a briefing on the latest OYS at 1:00.
Okay, 1:00. Right. Okay. I'll just ask my colleagues if we can be succinct as possible. It would be helpful. Councilmember, yep?
I was just going to ask a technical question, but I can deal with it on my own. I was going to ask, because going back to law school, there's a difference between assault and battery. And when we're talking about sexual assault, in my mind, assault is, you know, the apprehension of, the fear of something happening to you, as opposed to the actual physical touching, which to me is battery. So I'm just curious, when we're talking about sexual assault, I mean, that includes touching, obviously. And is there a reason for the distinction kind of being blurred?
So in our report, we tried to make it clear the difference between the offenses, the different penal codes, which does include your 220 or attempt, which would then cover your typical explanation for assault, which would be the apprehension or fear of. But in general, it's easy to get confused between the two different reports, the reference to sexual assault, where it, it's being combined to all the different crime categories, and that specific crime category, which would just be the attempt.
Sure.
So.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. I guess I'll just end by saying that I echo the comments made earlier about the need for professional interviewers, because oftentimes that's probably the record that, that, you know, when they go on trial, they'll be torn apart on, and those first initial impressions, those first initial statements will be the basis and the foundation for whatever prosecution. So I echo the importance of that, to getting it right the first time. And I'll yield with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. Actually, just a couple of comments. Thank you to those in the audience who came and shared your thoughts and words of encouragement for us to continue on to research and develop the programs we need to address sexual assault. These statistics are alarming. The, the one number that surprised me the most is that, Angelie, you mentioned in your report, and by the way, the reports were fabulous. Thank you. The information was very helpful, is the number of youth victims and, and youth offenders, 3299 plus 216. 3,515 youth were involved in these crimes in nine months in the city of San Jose. That's appalling. We need to do better to educate, recognize what's happening and resolve it. To Mr. Beatty's comments, I am very mindful of his statements regarding the victims and the offenders, and that the offenders many times come from homes that are dysfunctional at the very least, but abusive to a greater level. How we resolve that, or how we get our hands around that, I'm not quite sure, except education and awareness and being very involved with our schools and identifying difficult family situations from the time our children are little. Because really, it's the, the school districts, the teachers, the principals, who know firsthand when something is happening with their children. They know if behavioral issues are, if a child's behavior is changing, and they're able to develop a level of trust that the police department isn't able to, to develop as quickly and has developed it too, too late potentially. We already have a victim at that point. But if we can, as our partners in these working groups, embrace or involve the administrations of some of the, of the school districts, and I know we have a lot of school districts, so it's not just the high schools that we need to focus on. We do need to address the high schools as it relates to teaching healthy relationships. But all children need to be aware that they should be talking to their teachers if something comes up, and to trust them. So the one thing I, two things, and the one takeaway that I have is that we need more resources. Chief, I guess we need to know what that is. What, because I, this is something we need to really throw as much money as we can to resolve it. It's not just training the police department, it's making sure that we have the investigators at all level to, to deal with the children and the families and the, the examinations and from every step of the way. So this is a regional issue, so we're not going to solve it just in San Jose, but San Jose is where we can control it. So I'd love to hear a, from you at some point, a realistic budget of what you think would be helpful. And I appreciate your efforts to develop and increase the trauma-informed team. I think that's really a great step. I also want to talk about the cultural competency skills as it relates specifically to the LGBT community, and make sure that we're including that and not just the different nationalities or, or race cultural competency, but that we're dealing with LGBT issues. And dealing with statistics, we have, to Dr. Smith, we have all the numbers that relate to our different populations, African-American, Caucasian, et cetera, but we don't have any statistics related to the LGBT community. Is there a way to break that out in, in the next report?
It's all data-dependent, so we don't, we didn't have that particular variable to look at. If, if it's available, then absolutely, then yes, that's very doable. I'm not sure that it is, though.
For this specific report, it, it may or may not be, when you're talking about abuse occurring or assault occurring mostly with family members, it may not be the LGBT community that may be more bullying and aggression in schools. But at some point, I'd like to see that statistic at well. And I'd also, you also mentioned that you have information you could share with us at some point on what works and what doesn't regarding violence reduction strategies, and I'd love to hear that at, at too, that at some point. And with that, I, I will yield.
Thank you. Councilmember Kimmich?
Yes, I only wanted to get a clarification of the motion that was passed, or, on the, on the, did it include the further analysis of, of what we're discussing, the rise in the statistics to look at Prop 47?
No, I think it's the maker of the motion. Yeah, Councilmember Renus. Yeah. I think the question is whether the motion includes anything relating to Prop 47.
The, the statistics said that, remember, we were just talking about going forward further in the investigation, the statistics looking at correlation on, basically, how Proposition 47 has affected, or 57 has affected the rise in this, since we had a huge rise in between 13 and 19.
We should probably be clear about whether you're talking about 47 and 57. I don't think 47 had anything to do with sexual assault crimes.
Well, so before you got here, Mayor, they were talking about the increases, a huge increase, and there was some correlations that we did discuss, and.
No, but Prop 47 itself, I don't think actually implicates, it has to do with wobblers primarily. Is that right, Chief? Well, Mayor, I think what the, the point that was being made is that, and it was just to further study the fact that, that some of the reforms that have been done revolving around drugs could have an impact on the fact that either our victims or suspects are using drugs more readily now than before 2014.
On drug use.
On drug use.
As a, as a cause of sexual, okay.
Correct.
Thank you. I'm sorry for.
Yeah, no problem, Mayor. I, that's what I was asking.
Okay.
I know, I know we got this really nice presentation or five-page packet about, I just got it on my desk about half an hour ago. But it, this explanation doesn't necessarily mean that there isn't a correlation, and I just wanted to see if we can go further down in details, get, get more details.
Thank you, Councilmember. But I think I'm going to leave that out because as I'm looking at the handout that Councilmember Carrasco distributed on what is Proposition 47, some of the excludable offenses, including murder, assault with intent to commit a sex crime, spousal rape, rape, enticing or procuring a female for prostitution or illicit purposes, inducing a sex act, pimping involving a victim, oral copulation, sexual penetration, sex act with a child age 10 or younger. I think among some of those, it's pretty clear that we're not talking about the same folks. And I think that research, you know, could be done maybe through priority setting or at another opportunity, but it doesn't seem like these are the same folks that we're talking about. And I really would like to focus on system improvement so that we can have further support for the victims that are going through these horrendous crimes.
Well.
And as a secondor, I agree.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about, and none of these things, none of these, we didn't talk about any of these things. We talked about alcohol and drug addiction, and, which are in this packet. And the study itself pointed to this, so if we're not willing to look at all potential causes.
How did the study point to drug addiction or drug abuse? I didn't see any, any mention of that. Where exactly, point that out, Councilmember?
Councilmember Sparta, Councilmember Kimmich, has the floor.
So when I, when I asked the university professor about the potential that Prop 47, the release of people who have drug addiction issues could have correlated with this, he said yes. It is one factor that could be. And so if we're not looking, if we're not looking at all the factors, then, then why, why bother? If we're not looking at all the factors? I mean, if you have a preconceived conclusion, that's your business, but I wanted to take a look at all the potential causes.
Thank you, Councilmember. It's not that I have a preconceived conclusion, because we know that drug addiction and drugs have a lot to do with many different crimes. But the focus of, of today's discussion and the focus of this research was to figure out how, what, what the trends are with our victims. And I'm not sure that we've even gotten to the bottom of that. We, I've asked in my earlier comments, I've asked for us to further review the ethnicity breakdown. I've asked for us to take a look at whether those assailants are living in the same residence as our victims, because our, our location information was too generic, or maybe because we don't collect that information, so that would be something that we would need to change. I think there's so much that we need to do at this point that I see that as a separate item. And I appreciate your concern about, about Proposition 47. I just don't know that this is the conversation to include it in.
So you're okay with looking at, the, the statistics already said that most of the, most of the people who do these are related and/or are indoors and are known to the victims. I'm comfortable with those statistics, and I'm comfortable with your direction to study it even further. But if you're saying that drug addiction doesn't have anything, or recidivism of, not recidivism, but that the release of these, of people who have been convicted for drug addictions had nothing to do with, with some of the large increases in assaults, then I think that we're not looking at the whole pie and in the, in the, in the assessment. If you're not assessing this, you're missing the, a big picture.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but I think what you're, what you're trying to intersect is the use of drugs along with the use of these other crimes. And these other crimes that I just mentioned that were sex-related are. And these other crimes that I just mentioned that were sex-related are excludable offenses from Prop 47. So I see that as a completely different research.
I'm going to cut it off at this point. I think the request for amendment is declined. So, Councilmember Kimmich?
Yeah, I won't be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Carrasco?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to thank, I wanted to thank all the speakers that were here and spoke on this issue. This is a very difficult issue to speak on. For those of us who are listening to it, you know, we're, we're going to make a decision to move forward and have some, a deeper dive, of course. It's difficult to look at the data, but for those who have had any sort of direct experience or even indirect experience, it's a very difficult life experience to overcome. I, when I went into social work, I worked with families and victims of domestic violence. And so I have had some professional experience with families who had to overcome these kinds of situations. And so I applaud you for being here. And you know better than anyone how important it is to raise your voice against these situations and make sure that we continuously have these conversations and make sure that it's at the forefront of the decisions that we're making. And as a city, as, as we're growing, and we're growing very, very quickly, we need to make sure that we're all on the same page, that especially when we look at the numbers and when we look at who are the victims, this is, this is a very serious situation. And, and Rick, thank you so much for being here. Every time that you speak on your beautiful daughter, you remind us of how important it is to not forget to have these conversations. And, and for the student who was at presentation, of course, thank you for, for being here and for being, for sharing your, your truth. One of the things that I just wanted to say, this was, this is, this was my entree into, into social work. I was very young. I was 20, all of 23 years old, trying to understand the cycle of violence and the power and control wheel, and trying to understand how that, that became such a hazard and how really that became a threat to especially women and children's lives. And even if it didn't actually take someone's life, and we're talking about whether it was sexual abuse or domestic violence, even if it didn't actually take your life, it altered your life completely. And you spoke on this. You spoke on how the individual who took your daughter's life had been exposed to it. And so it became part of that person's norm. It became a way of life. And maybe that person just at some point didn't know the difference between right and wrong. And so this is why it becomes such an important issue, because we need to make sure that we're intervening and, and as a city and as city leaders, we, we signal that this is an unacceptable behavior. Whether it's hard, quick and harsh punishments, whether it's a quick and supportive network for the victims and the families, whether it is as leaders taking a unified stance against abuse and sexual assault and domestic violence, but we need to be able to be on the same page. Law enforcement, city leaders, community stakeholders, survivors, county, city, nonprofits. But, but I think it's, it's important. What's troubling to me, there's many things that are troubling to me. One is that, that the numbers, and especially the, the youth involved, the victims are getting younger and younger. I was working with adults when I was 23. And I'm seeing the, the numbers of victims getting younger and younger, and that says to me that it's a lifetime of, of very private torture that now, now these individuals are having to live with. It's a lifetime of nightmare that they live with. And it's also a lifetime of having to support an individual to right a wrong, to try and somehow get them on the right path, if, if it's an assailant. And how do we do that? And, and how do we support the victim so that they don't get victimized all over again as their life unfolds, but rather deliver on a promise that life can be normal again or it can be beautiful in, in, in this city or in any city that they choose? One of the things that, that I just want to mention just very quickly, the, one of the things that troubles me about every time that this subject comes up about Prop 47 is that there is clearly a whole list of things that are not, are not, are not qualified to be pardoned on. And among them is a whole litany of sex-related and violent-related crimes. And so these are low offending criminals that were pardoned under Prop 47. That was the whole intent. And so to assume that because you passed a bad check, a fraudulent check, that predisposes you to sexual abuse, I think really sets up our community in a really bad way. There's a really bad narrative that I'm really uncomfortable with. Or that our, our community members who may have been in possession of, you know, and I don't know what the limits are, concentrated cannabis, it says here, that which now is, might probably be completely legal. They qualified under Prop 47 to have that pardoned, can now be somehow assumed that they were predisposed to rape. But anyway, so.
Councilwoman Carrasco, I think we've moved beyond it.
Okay, I just wanted to get on the record, Mayor. I understand. But so, Dr. Smith, thank you so much for being here. I appreciate your presence and I appreciate your, your, your research. The last thing I'm going to say is the following, that I was looking at some statistics, and there is a trend in, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the trend here that we're seeing in terms of the numbers going up regarding sexual abuse and rape are across the country. So we're seeing that across the country. It's not just in San Jose. So there is, there is, there's some troubling numbers that we're seeing everywhere. So some things that were brought up were that, that potentially there was a correlation with, with Prop 47. But what I think might have happened also four years ago, when we started seeing the trend besides the change in the definition, was that some of our national leaders were also setting some pretty bad examples. So I think that we have to look at all of the factors that may have been contributing because in addition to the sexual, the sexual assaults and rapes that have been going up across the country and in San Jose, we also saw a trend upward of hate crimes that we're also grappling with. And I just bring that up because I think that we need to consider many, many things that we're seeing that now we're grappling with. An antisemitic sentiment, an anti-immigrant sentiment, hate crimes, rape, sexual assault. But, but, but what I think that this calls for, as San Jose continues to grapple with these issues, is that we're going to really have to look to see how we invest in our, how we invest our very scarce resources and leverage what little we have with the county so that we can maximize those resources as best we can. I think that the county is doing some great work. I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel. I think that there's best practices. I have not been in domestic violence and sexual assault work in a very, very long time, so I can't, I can't pretend that I know what the best practices are right now. But I do know this, that the effects and the impact of sexual abuse and domestic violence on a family and on a community is a lifetime, and it's intergenerational. You must break that cycle, otherwise it continues. And so with that, again, my, my, my hope is that we will continue to move forward with the county and with our nonprofit organizations that do the work the best way, and that we can continue working with our law enforcement so that we make sure that the perpetrators pay the, the, the most expensive price that we can potentially put on their heads and make it very public, that this is not where we tolerate violence against women and children. And that we absolutely wrap ourselves around our, our survivors and their families and let them know that we are going to stand with them every step of the way.
Thank you. I know Dave had a question about clarification of the motion. Dave, do you want, do you want to specify?
Yeah, I just, just wanted maybe to more summarize it and make sure, and see if Eddie and Jennifer want to jump in, because I think there was a lot packed into it. And certainly want to reinforce the importance of this issue and our commitment to continuing to work on it. I think the motion was to accept the report and kind of the work plan that's included in the report. I think there is a request for additional information and analysis. I'm just kind of putting these things into buckets. So additional information and analysis, additional coordination and partnering with the county and other agencies, kind of a schedule for future updates, and also a request that we bring forward, a budget proposal surrounding resources. So I think there's some wiggle room to kind of how we do this, but that, I believe, in my mind, Councilmember captured the motion. I do know when it comes to the additional information analysis, several councilmembers kind of jumped in with, I would like to see. I think some of that we'll do our best to incorporate, even though I don't think there was necessarily specifically an acceptance within the motion for some of those things. But that's fine, I think. So Jennifer and Eddie, do you want to kind of help me? Is it, am I getting it?
If I can just, if I can just address the additional info and analysis, let me just back up and just, I just want to remind everyone. So when this special meeting slash study session was established, the dates were established, it was after that that the police department actually decided to reach out to UTSA. So we did that from a proactive perspective. So I just want to make sure that if there's any issues with regards to not enough info, that's completely on the fact that we decided to bring in UTSA after this meeting was already scheduled, and we actually did move it out. So that was just us trying to get some empirical data from a criminologist on some of the data that we've been talking about for a very long time. Having said that, I just have to remind, I mean, and I know my staff's not going to say it, but from, with Angelique and Lieutenant Anderson, this is not all they do. And so we, I would hope that we can try to find a way to streamline a process as we're dealing with a unit that obviously is very impacted and to have the lieutenant. I just hope there's a better streamlining fashion to get this information. One of the things, and in just talking with Dr. Smith, we can leverage UTSA for some of this data to get additional information, and that'd be a really good way for us. If we could formalize a way that we can get you the data you need, but at the same time, you know, lessen the impact on current staff, because I know everyone acknowledges our staffing shortages, but at the same time, asking for more, we need to figure out a plan of how to leverage that a little bit better. So that, that would be my two cents.
And then Councilmember Renus, if, as a friendly amendment to your motion, I would recommend that maybe we perhaps, instead of doing quarterly reports, that we use their, the police department's operations and performance by-month report, since, and this could be a standing issue every other month, so it'd actually be a little bit more frequent, but it would probably be, with the way that report is formulated, a little bit less work for the police department, just to keep you just constant updates, and we can make a little section for that, since this is a matter of interest, and this would fall right in line with that report.
Absolutely. I will heed that recommendation, absolutely. Am I supposed to respond to you, Chief, or is that not? Okay, so just a comment about us making sure we acknowledge the workload.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. And I want to thank everyone for their work in putting this together. I also want to thank Catherine and Diane and Rick for being the voice of, the conscience of the community about the need for us to confront the victimization in our community by sexual assailants. And Mary Ritter for her life's work in this place, in this, in this area, and all of you for, for your work here. I had a couple of questions that are important to me to clarify what's really going on with the data. And I wanted to first refer to the slides referring to the relationships, the relationship types. There are a series of slides, the first on strangers, the second on acquaintances, and the third on familiar relationships. And I'm just looking under the report, and I'm sorry, I came in late, but at least in the documents, it's slides 11 through 14. I'm not sure if that's true on the, there we go. So as we, we go to the next slide here, okay, you see stranger 220s, 260s, 280s. Now, I know that that refers to, but I'm just trying to understand, 260s, is that meant to be a proxy for all adult victims? Does that include 2615s?
That's the legacy definition of rape.
Does that include a 2615 statutory rate?
The offenses, and the 260s were 261 rape, 262 A1 spousal rape, and that's, that's it.
Okay, so excluded 2615, that's good. And then the 280s, is that meant to be a proxy for juvenile victims, for youth?
280s were sodomy, oral copulation, foreign object penetration.
Okay, but typically like a 288, it specifically has to be on a victim who's 14 or under.
288A was the specific code section that we got in the data that were, that are reflected in those graphs.
Doesn't that have an age limitation on it, 288A?
I don't know.
Unless it's a sub-A. I know there's a sub-A, and then there's an A with a parentheses. I'm not sure what you're referring to.
It's 288AA.
Okay, so remind me, does that, does that mean a victim has to be, is that ludonocivious or is that, is that, can that include an adult victim?
I believe that is the oral cop, forced oral cop.
That's right. So the relationships are just that. They're not, there's, they're, those are not age-bound.
Okay, those are, that's just action, that's the act.
Correct.
That's defined there. Okay, because I was trying to figure out what you were getting at in grouping these different crimes together. And what you're talking about is different acts?
Correct.
Not, not victim types. Okay, not victim categories. I guess, because I'm particularly interested in the distinction between what's going on with victimization of adults versus victimization of children. And particularly, I'm attuned to it because if you look at the slide and the USTA slide packet, I think it was slide number five, that describes, let's see here. Now, again, I'm not sure if it was, keep going back. I'll see if I can find it. Yeah, one more back, I'm sorry. It was that one, there was a variation of that slide came, there it goes. One more back, there we go. All right. So you've got sexual assault rate, all types, and then rape rates. And if instead of that red line, we simply took a 288A, a ludonocivious against child or, and other categories against child victims, wouldn't you expect the slope of that line to be sharper upward?
So potentially, but you know, particularly given, the, the police data that, that were presented here, those, that's the first time I've seen that analysis.
Okay.
So, you know, we, we looked at changes in, in child victimization over time.
Yeah.
That's this slide right here. And absent some year-to-year variation, there wasn't a lot of change.
You're not seeing it.
No. We did not. We did not, we did not further break that down by age bands, for example.
Yeah.
So, some of what I've heard today is that there's a suggestion that victims are getting younger, we just didn't go that far with the data. It's possible to do, we just didn't do it.
Right, but it didn't stick out yet?
Not yet, not, not, no.
Okay, yeah, I, that's really what I want to try to get at, because it seems to me, look, in my limited experience, I prosecuted these cases for four or five years, and generally the perps that we saw committing one type of crime against adults were not the same perps who were committing the crimes against children. And I'm trying to figure out where, where, where should we be focused in, between those two categories? Do you have any conclusion based on what you're seeing, because I'm not clearly seeing it myself?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry you missed the presentation.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But, one other thing, you know, we, we were hoping that we would have found the smoking gun in the data, and we didn't find that.
Right.
Okay. Now, we have, we exhausted all of the data and then analytic possibilities, no, we, we haven't. And so, I still, I, I agree with the suggestions that there's additional analytic work to be done, even with the data, the data that we had, let alone some additional questions that could be asked with additional types of data. So I think there's, you know, we haven't mined the data for all it's worth yet, and some of these, I've, I've noted some various questions during the day of that, that are potentially of interest. So, but I can tell you that based on this analysis that you have in front of you, there's not a lot of there, there.
Yeah.
There's, it, it is a generalized increase, for sure. We looked at it by offender or relationship, we looked at it by age, we looked at it by type and location and a whole variety of ways, looking for that pattern and trend that stuck out.
Right.
And absent the couple of slides that I referenced while you were out, with timed reporting and weapon use between 17 and 18.
Yeah, we just saw that.
There wasn't, there wasn't a big story to tell in terms of something that we could latch on to as an intervention point.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, and that's consistent with what you said in your report, and I appreciate that, I was just trying to probe a little further here. Can I ask, and I don't expect you guys to be experts in all things in this subject, but in terms of evidence-based approaches to education, you know, I know that there's been a lot of discussion about that, how we should spend the dollars that we have, and, look, we have a lot of different options, we could go be spending money on more SART nurses, we could be spending money on more detectives, or there's been a suggestion we could spend money on education. Are there really proven programs around education that actually will reduce a likelihood of victimization?
Not that I'm, not, not for sexual assault, not that I'm aware of. There are some, there are some college-based intervention programs and, and education programs that have been evaluated with some varying levels of success. If we're talking about elementary, high school, middle school type of education programs around sexual assault, I'm not aware of any. I would be skeptical of those, any, you know, just based on related kinds of programs, we're programming that we've tried over the years, DARE, for example, it's been singularly unsuccessful. So, I'm not suggesting that it's not a good way for the city to spend its money, or that it would be, wouldn't be successful, but I know of no evidence to suggest that it would be.
Okay. And then finally, you know, a very large percentage of our cases that we prosecuted were the 288s involving a child victim, and it always seemed to be a situation where you had a child who did not have continual supervision by, by a parent, for all the obvious reasons, mom's got two jobs and dad hit the road a long time ago, and so the uncle or the mom's boyfriend or the, or the coach has access to the child in the home or somewhere familiar. Is there, have you seen any kind of community-based programs that enable us to better inform parents that enable, that have you seen that have been successful out there, that better inform parents, that, that enable folks to be more resilient to this, this kind of problem?
That's a great question, and, and so, one of the difficulties we have is, there, there is very little research, actually, on community-based efforts to reduce sexual assault, there's just very little research out there. Outside of controlled settings like college campuses, other kinds of, you know, event-based assault problems, when you have, when you have cities that have a rise, generalized rise in sexual assaults, and the question becomes, what do you do about it? There's not, there's not a roadmap that I'm aware of out there.
Thank you, appreciate your honesty. Okay, well, I look forward to continuing to push ahead, I know we've got a lot more work to do, and I appreciate all the work that's been done. There's a motion from Councilmember Arenas. There are any other questions? If not, we will vote on that motion.
Just a verbal vote would be fine.
I'm sorry?
A verbal.
A verbal vote only, okay, very well. All right, all in favor on the motion? Any opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you all. Me as adjourned.